Council, please come to order. Call the roll.
Burnson, Chick, Fuhrer, Glanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pajeco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Orange Wax, Walters, Foro, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Well, the council, please come to order. This is a meeting of the City Council for the City of Los Angeles on the... What's the date today? Eight, February eighth, the year 2000. There are fifteen council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel thirty-five, and we're also being monitored by council phone. First order of business.
Mr. President, on the regular agenda, item number thirteen, there's a request to continue that matter until March twenty-fourth.
Is there any objections to that? If not, unanimous vote.
Item number forty-six, a closed session item, requests that matter be continued one day till Wednesday, February ninth.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Items number twenty through twenty-two are requests from the department and the council offices to reach, have these matters received and filed. That's twenty through twenty-two.
Twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. If there's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Items number one through twelve on the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have been held.
Item number, which ones?
One through twelve.
One through twelve. We have motions required on four, five, and six. We'll call those special. And we need a presentation on item six, so we'll call that special. Yeah, ordinance. We'd need twelve votes on that, so we'll hold that on the desk. Mr. Hernandez is here. Any specials by council members? Ten. Any other specials? Any other specials? If not, prepare the roll on two, three, seven, eight, nine, eleven, and twelve. Tabulate the vote.
Eyes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items number fourteen through forty-four, with the exceptions of twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, are on the regular agenda as items for which public hearings have not been held.
Wait a minute, there's people want to be heard on forty-three. Let me, card, twenty-six. Okay, we have cards on, on fourteen. Wait a minute, let me, let me go, let me, let me do this. We have cards on fourteen, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight, and forty-two, and forty-three. Does anybody want to be heard on any of the other items? We'll call those, those that I called with cards are special. Any specials by council members? Huh? Thirty-nine? What, Mr. Wax?
Twenty-nine and forty-one.
Okay. Twenty-eight and thirty-seven? Okay. Let's see now, what do we have? We have... Mr. Stavornic is here, so we have twelve members. So, prepare the roll on one, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-one through thirty-six, thirty-eight, forty. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Can we have some quiet in the council chamber, please, especially the council members? Okay. Next item.
Item number forty-five is a closed session item, so that would be held on the desk. Item number four called special.
We have, on item number four, we have two committee reports, or is it three committee reports? We have Mr. Fuhrer, Mr. Hernandez, we have committee reports on item four.
Move the budget committee report, please.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fuhrer, and second by Mr. Hernandez, the Budget and Finance Committee report. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item is five, and we have three committee reports. We want to send this to some other committees, maybe we can get another report. Would you?
Move budget. Move budget, John.
Okay. We have a motion to move it, to move the Budget and Finance Committee report. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Items, item six we'll hold on the desk. Next item.
Item number ten, called special by council member Chick.
Mrs. Chick?
Yes, Mr. President and colleagues, item eight before you is a very, very important and needed first step.
Now, this is item number ten.
Thank you. And that's exactly what I'm talking about, Mr. President.
That's what I thought you said.
Need to keep my glasses on, I think. Item number ten is putting into place at last a much-needed employee early return-to-work policy. This is a change that was recommended by outside expert consultants in workers' comp improvements and reform. It was also a recommendation, and I think this is very important, from our Joint Labor Management Committee that brought Personnel Department and representatives of our employee bargaining units and unions to the table to look at recommendations to get a grip on the runaway workers' comp costs that come out of our general fund that are currently hovering at a hundred and sixteen million dollars, up from about eighty million five years ago. It has been shown through observation and research that, in fact, an early return-to-work policy done properly is good, very good, for the workers as well as for the employee, city government, and for our constituents. It's shown that the longer workers stay off work, the more likely they are to never return to being a functioning, fully-employed, and wage-earning person. In addition, your Personnel and Government Efficiency Committees are continuing to work with Personnel Department, with the Joint Labor Management Committee, and with the Risk Management Unit in the CAO's office and the city attorney to bring forward a series of other needed changes and work products to see that we start to make our workplace safer, prevent accidents and injury and illnesses to our employees, and reduce the taxpayers' wasted dollars on a runaway workers' comp system. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this? If not, prepare the roll on ten. You did a great job. Tabulate the vote.
Always injured, please.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. The next item.
Item number fourteen, called special.
Yeah, we have a card, a couple cards on that. Ms. Glanter's not here yet, so we'll hold those on the desk. The next item. Mr. Burnson has asked if we take item forty-three. If there's no objections, we'll take forty-three. If there's no objections, we'll take forty-three. Okay, we have Jeff Brain, Leonard Shapiro, and Larry Calamine.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Brain. I'm president of Valley Vote. I'm here to urge you to support the Burnson Wax motion and remove the restrictions that the city has tried to place on the city's share of funding for the LAFCO study. Any attempt to restrict or control the scope of the study is inappropriate. When there were discussions happening earlier in the year between the state, the county, and the city, there was never any discussion about any restrictions on the funding. The state and the county have not put any restrictions. There's a confusion about what LAFCO's role is. And yesterday, Valley Vote sent all of you copies of the government code related to the study. All the applicant is required to do is hand in the petition and the application. LAFCO has the ultimate decision about what the structure of the new city and the reorganization of the existing city will be. Twice, the city has come before LAFCO and asked for these restrictions, and twice, the LAFCO Commission has unanimously rejected them. In Government Code Section fifty-six-eight-three-three, it says, "LAFCO, in order to complete their analysis, can look at any information and conduct any analysis needed to make the findings required." We would ask where the city finds that they are prohibited from making these findings. Almost done. There are very complex issues related to the reorganization of Los Angeles. If there is to be a breakup of the city, issues such as DWP, harbor, the airports, how the sewers are treated, need to be analyzed and alternatives need to be considered. All LAFCO is asking to be able to do is look at those alternatives. It would be in the best interest of the citizens of Los Angeles, the best interest of the employees of these departments, and the best interest of the new and the existing city if LAFCO has that ability to study those alternatives. And that's all they're asking to do. So, we encourage you to support the Burnson motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Larry Calamine?
I thought surely he'd had me follow Leonard. Good morning. On December ninth, nineteen ninety-eight, a petition containing approximately two-hundred-and-two-thousand signatures of San Fernando Valley voters was filed with LAFCO. Said petition filing was the first step in the LAFCO process wherein the people of the San Fernando Valley could seek to break away from the city of Los Angeles and create their own city. On June second, nineteen ninety-nine, a petition containing approximately eighteen thousand two-hundred signatures of the Harbor Area voters was also filed with LAFCO. The people of the Harbor Area are also seeking to break away from the city of Los Angeles and create their own city. LAFCO engaged the Urban Research Division of the Los Angeles County Chief Administrative Office to prepare a municipal secession fiscal analysis scoping study. Said scoping study was received by LAFCO in January of nineteen ninety-nine, over a year ago. This scoping study was not, this scoping study not only identified the scope of work required by LAFCO to complete a comprehensive fiscal analysis as required by the government code, but it also estimated a range of costs relating to that scope of work. On May twenty-second, uh, May twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-nine, LAFCO adopted a seven-plan, seven-step plan, which was based on the aforementioned scoping study. This seven-step plan is intended to deeply involve the applicants and the city in the LAFCO process, and in doing so minimize the cost of preparing the required comprehensive fiscal analysis. Following the adoption of the seven-step plan, LAFCO staff, along with LAFCO Commissioner and County Board Supervisor Xavier Stloski, we began funding negotiations with the state legislature, the county of Los Angeles, and the city of Los Angeles. We were remarkably successful in that the state of California agreed to fund eighty percent of our estimated two-point-six-five-million-dollar cost. The county agreed to fund ten percent, and the city agreed to fund ten percent of that cost. At no time during those discussions were any conditions to city funding ever mentioned. The state has funded its two-point-one-two million. The county has funded its two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, and the city has yet to fund the two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, or its ten percent of the cost. In this letter of January fifth, two thousand, the city of Los Angeles did, for the first time, attempt to condition the funding of its ten percent, or two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand. An additional letter dated January twenty-sixth, two thousand, to LAFCO from the office of the city attorney placed even further conditions on city funding. It should not be a surprise to anyone that the LAFCO Commission rejected all attempts by the city to condition its funding of the two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars. Neither the state nor the county has placed any conditions to their funding. For the city to do so at this time can only be construed by the LAFCO commissioners and the public, as the city's attempt to subvert the LAFCO process and deny some two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand petition signers the right to redress their grievances. LAFCO has been assured by Mayor Riden that the city would be cooperative in the LAFCO process studying special reorganization of the San Fernando Valley and the Harbor Areas. LAFCO respectfully requests that the city council live up to that pledge today and adopt the amendment to the prior council action regarding city funding of the two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars to LAFCO without condition. Thank you.
Leonard Shapiro.
Mr. President and council members, I rise to back strongly the motion of Councilman Hal Burnson on what's, what's going to happen with the two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars that the city put in and all of a sudden is finding conditions. I say what's behind this movement is more important than what we actually are trying to do. What's behind this movement, it seems to me, as you just heard from Mr. Calamine, is an attempt to subvert the actions and the anticipated activities of citizens of the, of the city who cooperated with the law to, to sign a petition, to have a study made of what the conditions will be. To, if the city put in these conditions, and then the county throws in a few more conditions, and the state decides to put in conditions, there'll be no study made. It seems kind of silly to say at this late stage in the game that all of a sudden you're going to put in a roadblock and you're going to try to stop the whole process. The process won't be stopped, but it's obvious, as you The process won't be stopped, but it's obvious, as you just heard, that the citizens, as well as the newspapers and the media, and as well as everybody, is going to understand what this attempt is all about, Mr. President.
That's all the cards to his behalf, so the public hearing is closed. Mr. Burnson, it's Mr. Burnson's motion. I'll call Mr. Burnson first.
Yes, members of the council, I think you've heard the testimony that's been given. Essentially, my motion really doesn't alter anything that is other than what is required by state law. It simply eliminates the paragraph that was added as an amendment, which is kind of a red flag thrown in the face of people in parts of the city, and says that you're not going to cooperate, or you're going to try to do everything you can to stop the, the study from going forward. Basically, my amendment simply says this, that, that LAFCO, that this money be given to LAFCO with the understanding it'll be used only for what? Their response, carry out their responsibilities under state law, and that's all we should do. I don't want to belabor this, but actually speaking, let's not assume that everybody who has signed a petition, or anybody who's living in those areas, automatically wants to break away from the city. What you're certainly doing, if we adopt this language that was amended, that I want to take out and change, is saying that we want to, we want to alter the process. We don't want to give the, the process a fair hearing so that the facts can be brought to light. So I think that as a matter of good faith, we should not try to make people who already may feel disenfranchised, or maybe the ones that are in the middle and don't care, or have no opinion at this time, I think those are the people that may be affected and say, "Look, this is just another instance of trying to stick it to the valley and to the harbor, and we really don't have representation under the city." So, my amendment really doesn't do anything that will damage the city. It merely states the money is given to LAFCO strictly in accordance with carrying out their duties under state law, and I would urge and I'll vote on this.
Ms. Stokowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask the council to pay attention to this because it may sound a little complex, and particularly given some of the letters that we've received from the City Attorney recently. Last August, when LAFCO was beginning to go through its process, and there was initially a request for how LAFCO would form its process, prior to that, LAFCO had adopted a seven-point program of what steps would be followed. The City Attorney, in consultation with the mayor, the president, and myself, as Chair of Ad Hoc Secession Committee, pointed out that as LAFCO was going to consider putting out RFPs for its own consultants, that LAFCO was going to ask its consultant perhaps to do something called initial fiscal analyses. What that would do, or could do, is put LAFCO in the position of preparing a reorganization proposal. That is contrary to what LAFCO has said it is intending to do, is contrary to the steps that LAFCO set out itself. Clearly, the applicant, or the applicants, Valley Vote, the Harbor Secession Group, any other future groups, need to prepare their own reorganization proposal. The City Attorney advised us, and has advised us again most recently, that LAFCO cannot legally spend the money the city is giving it, or the money the state has given it, or the money the county has given it, to do its background and its, its preparation of data. They cannot use that money to prepare the reorganization plan itself, or to do those initial fiscal analyses. The City Attorney recently sent a letter to us saying that he advised us, or recommended, that we approve the Burnson motion, which takes the language out of the, of the money that we sent to LAFCO with that condition attached. But then the City Attorney wrote the following sentence in that very letter, which he said adopt, recommends adopting the Burnson motion. He said, "In addition to the Burnson language, LAFCO will be obligated to follow all applicable provisions of the Cortez-Zinox Act." I asked the City Attorney, did that mean that that caveat that we had sent over with the recommendation for our money to go to LAFCO was still in effect? That is, that they cannot use it to do the initial fiscal analyses. The City Attorney, I had three different City Attorneys opine that yes, that condition is still in effect. So if the condition is still in effect, members of the council, I believe that it's better to be straightforward, say that our legal advice has been that that's what it can and cannot be used for, and that it stay intact. Because essentially, what this letter says is adopt the motion, which says we don't need to say it, but it really is still out there intent, by intent and by legal requirement. I would like to ask the City Attorney to come forward, Mr. Merkin and Mr. McCosker, to verify that that, what I have said is true, that they still believe legally that LAFCO cannot spend the money for these IFAs, these initial fiscal analyses, and Mr. Deaton might come forward as well to help.
You said we have three opinions from the City Attorney?
No, we actually have three attorneys who say the same thing. I just thought.
That's, that's, that might be a first.
In three different ways, and one of them is sort of, we don't have to say it, but we really mean it. That's the, that's the one that the City Attorney last said. Yes. Mr. McCosker, Mr. Merkin, can you go through that again and indicate whether or not you agree that legally, the requirement, that what we said in sending over the earlier letter, that LAFCO cannot legally spend the money for this purpose, is valid?
That is correct, Councilmember Ms. Stokowski. Back in August, and more recently, we have presented to LAFCO concerns with regard to these initial fiscal analyses, and we believe that the Cortez-Zinox Act, that the seven steps that LAFCO itself has adopted, and the underlying basis for the funding of the study, all together indicate that for LAFCO to spend money and for it to undertake the activity of developing proposals before the applicant has presented a proposal would be unlawful. And so we've made that point back in August, we made it very recently to them. It's the condition that the, the city has attached to the city monies, and I think it's a consistent and a correct point of view.
President, members of the council. Jim Hahn affirms that, that advice. It continues to be the City Attorney's advice that in fact, the Cortez-Zinox Act provides that the petitioners shall make the proposal to LAFCO, and then LAFCO can spend its funds to analyze the proposal, LAFCO can analyze data. What, what Jim Hahn says in his letter is that there are various options which are available to the council. Some of those options provide the greatest security on the use of the funds, some provide less security on the use of the funds. The range basically goes from providing the money and rely upon state law, to expressly state that state law shall be applicable, or in a third option, to affirm the letter that several members, public officials of the city issued back in August, that expressly says the IFA shall not be used to, to create the proposal, or to design the city government, all the way to attach the more specific language as basically a grant condition in addition to relying upon the statutory language. Jim Hahn's policy recommendation, and not one that modifies legal advice, is that of those options, he would be supportive of the Burnson motion.
Okay, Mr. Deaton?
Mr. President, members of the council, you have, we just sent around some material over the last several months, and one of the, the first thing is steps, LA County, LAFCO documents, steps to special reorganization study. If you turn to the third page, it outlines responsibilities, it said, it's, the heading is who is responsible for components, and there are three sections, at LAFCO, applicant, and city. Basically, what the issue is, is whether or not, and the city's position is, is that LAFCO, the funds can be used, both the state, county, and city funds can be used for the LAFCO piece of that, which is steps two, four, and five, which is the request for information.
Two, four, and seven.
Two, four, and seven?
Seven.
Two, four, and seven. Stand corrected. Which is the request for information, review and analysis of data, and the final plan, which is the ultimate responsibility of LAFCO. The applicant's responsibilities are one and five, and the city's position has been that that, those monies, none of those monies can be used for one and five. Three and six, which is the accumulation of the data and response to the applicant's proposal, is the responsibility of the cities and is, will be funded within the general fund, and not, and not involved in that money as well. So the issue becomes, the reason the condition was added is, was an indication, as was the letter from in, in August of last year, from the mayor, and from the president of the council, and the chairwoman of the committee, that monies that we give cannot be used for items one and five. And the City Attorney's opinion today, and has been for the entire period of time, that those monies cannot be used for one and five as well. And that is the ultimate, that's the essence of the issue that is before you.
Anybody else? Are we through with that? Okay. Cindy, your time is up.
Basically, I just want to reiterate that, that we believe, and I believe that Mr. Burnson is correct, that what the council is intending to do is be, be fair and have LAFCO be fair. We want LAFCO to be the independent judge of a reorganization plan submitted by various applicants. What this does, by the advice of the City Attorney, if, if LAFCO were to spend the money, is LAFCO puts itself in the position of becoming the pseudo-applicant by preparing the reorganization plan itself, and that is what is not appropriate if we want to help LAFCO maintain its clear independence in its analysis.
Okay. Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say first, I think the city should provide funding to the study for an objective, independent analysis. There has been a lot of confusion about this, and I actually have a substitute motion to de-escalate things a little bit. I'm going to move, and I'll explain why in a moment, that this matter be continued for a week, and within that week, that there be a little summit, for want of a better term, convened between city officials and LAFCO to work this out. Because there will be moments for major battles when it comes to the issues associated with secession, but this should not be ground zero for that battle. We should be able to work this out, and I move that we create a team to do that. There is history here, and it hasn't really been explicitly sorted out. As the, in Budget and Finance, the author of this condition, I actually want to speak to it in ways that have not been spoken to so far. First, in November, when the committee looked at this, or late October, we heard testimony from representatives of the secessionists, of the Valley Vote folks, and we heard other discussion. And as we know, this whole issue of funding is a very controversial one. What I wanted to do was ask, was actually try to get some consensus around the issue, that there should be an objective, independent analysis, that far more money is necessary for that than the city's expenditure would provide, and it's important for us to get to yes, and have the money actually allocated. There was no objection to that from any of the Valley Vote advocates, or anybody else, either in the committee, nor when this matter came to the full council, which was in November, nor for that matter, for a couple months thereafter, was there any conversation whatsoever, and we all considered this to be a done deal, let the study move forward, let objective analysis flow, and the chips will fall where they may, but at least an objective analysis could be said to be to the benefit of all residents of our city, whether they support secession or not, which was my motivation. Then suddenly, right before the LAFCO meeting, the City Attorney unilaterally issued another letter, which created further controversy and ratcheted up the ante in a way that it didn't have to be. But it is, and that's where we are today. Given that history, and my view, that the money should be, should go to LAFCO, that there should be an objective analysis, that it's an analysis which, if done right, could benefit everybody in the city, and that it does not need to preordain the conclusion regarding secession, that we should try to work out this matter simply in a straightforward way, and I hope that there's a second to the motion to just continue it for, merely for a week, and try to work out in a collaborative, cooperative way, how to deal with this issue, and save the bigger fights for when fights ought to be dealt with, but not today.
Okay, let's find out. Hang on, Mr. Wax is next. No, no, come on. All right, Mrs. Chick seconds the motion. Mr. Wax.
I rise for a point of personal privilege.
I'm going to be honest with you, Mike. I'd like to, in, in, in an ideal world, that would be a good situation, but I'm, I really, I'm really disturbed by everything that has transpired here. I think that the actions of staff, City Attorney, and members of the council are only fueling the seeds of distrust and the seeds of dissatisfaction regarding this issue. It was a legitimate debate as to whether or not government should provide money for this, but under no circumstances should, should we be dictating to LAFCO what it should or shouldn't be doing. They are a state agency under state law, and they must obey the law in doing their job. And you have to assume that they are going to do that. If not, there will be recourse. And for, and for us to try to presume that they're not going to is inappropriate. More than that, however, is the process by which this came about. This was in our committee and the Charter Committee, and this never had any conditions. In fact, we said very specifically, we didn't want to put, we had the debate, and we discussed it, and we said, "No, trust LAFCO to do its job." And we voted out three to one, with one not there, on whether to fund it, but there was no conditions. Somehow, between when we voted out of our committee and it came to the council, conditions got added in. The people who asked for conditions in our committee and didn't get it, got them in someplace else. There was no debate about that on the council floor. The only debate once on the council floor again was, should we provide the money, or shouldn't we provide the money? And again, there was a legit, legitimate difference of opinion. Only later did I find out that those conditions had been added. That instantly fuels suspicion and distrust. Then comes the City Attorney's positions of, "You have to do it this way," but then when the Daily News says, comes down on the council, comes another letter saying, "Well, you really can do it this way, but this way means that way." You know, if, it's much better to just be honest and straightforward and say we have differences of opinion than to manipulate the system and manipulate the process and confuse things and all, because I'm, I think the fear becomes now that all we're doing by our actions here is setting up the city for a future lawsuit against LAFCO for missing, for improperly using the funds, as a way of ultimately trying to invalidate the study. One can look down the line, people who are cynical, and I am often cynical, can look down the line and project that as a strategy, and that would be wrong. What we need from LAFCO is everybody to let them do their job and give us the most comprehensive, objective, complete analysis. Then we can get into the debate as to what we should do with that information, what's the best line of thinking, what's the best approach to take, and there will be plenty of debate on that issue. But don't muddy the process in the first place in the way that we have, and I feel, I feel that we have gotten into a situation we never needed to have gotten into, and is going to do no good at all, not going to accomplish anything that the law doesn't already accomplish, but only fuels distrust.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez?
You know, members of the council, I need to state this because, for some reason, I think that we'd all be saying different things if we had a city that allowed one person, one vote. If we had a city where democracy was really operating and everybody had a part, the ability to participate, and our reality is that that's not what the city has. You see, it's not the poor poverty census tracts that are trying to succeed from the city, that's quite clear, who's trying to succeed. It's not the census tracts that are overcrowded in population density, whose infrastructure doesn't even allow for schools to be built, that are trying to succeed from the city. And it's not the historically representative areas of the city that is trying to succeed from the city. Now, when we talk about the state agency called LAFCO, it's not like those same areas that are not trying to succeed have representation on that body. And there's a historic reason why this city continues to have basically walls built between communities of people, and that's what this succession movement is about, the separation of our city. And we can try and mask it in many different ways and say that we're trying to allow people to participate in a process, when the reality, it's only one part of our city that is demanding this. And quite frankly, I think we had a president in this country who's decided that the country should be one and not two, and fought for that right. And I think some of us have to stand up and fight for that right for our city. How is it that we... How is it that we become that city that we talk about, one city, and not continue to basically fuel the separation of our city? And I think that we do have to have analysis of data, because I think it's going to show a different picture. But it has to be an objective analysis. Now, some of us might not want to say it the way it is, but this is not a city of one person and one vote. And I think this movement is proving that. I have no problem with the condition, because I happen to represent those areas that basically don't have representation on Lafco. And don't get me wrong, but I understand what politics has done to the city. And that's why I'm going to support basically what we've already agreed to do, and I have no need to change my position, and I have no need to try and disguise it. Thank you.
Mrs. Chick.
Yes, colleagues, first of all, I am going to withdraw my second of Mr. Fuhr's motion. I was not aware until after I did that. Mr. Burnson explained to me that there is a meeting and an action of Lafco tomorrow that I think makes our decision need to be more timely. I supported originally the condition that is in such debate, because at the time, it seemed to make good sense and to be very logical. And what I've heard from our city attorney today is that that's accurate, and that that motion is even lawful. It kind of reiterates. But I'm going today to vote for Mr. Burnson's motion, and some of those reasons have been very well stated by Mr. Wax and Mr. Burnson. But bottom line, I think that the fight perhaps, or the serious debate about what is in the best interests of the city, as well as its sections, and it is not only the Valley that is talking about this, that that fight will take place further down the line when Lafco has completed its study. And quite frankly, I want that study to go forward, because I think that study has a great deal to do with government efficiency and how to make the, our city work better. And I think if we did work better, delivering services, involving people, all the various things all of us talk about all the time, the changes we know are needed, that if we accomplish those, the discussion about wanting to be separate cities starts to lessen. I, I am not putting my time and energy into splitting up this city, quite the opposite. I'm putting my time and energy into making this city as a whole work better, because I see lots of advantages to our staying one city. But I, I absolutely think that we send the wrong message, that it's the same as saying we are so worried about what you're going to find out and what you're going to do, that we have to go this way. What the city attorney has said is in supporting Mr. Burnson's motion, that the letter of the law is still in place. What are we worried about? What are we making such a fuss about? Let's pass Mr. Burnson's motion, let this proceed, and rest assured that the protections of how our money is spent legally or not are in place. Thank you.
Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too am awaiting the results of the study to take a responsible position on secession. I do rise in support of the motion. And I think that the results of the study, when they come out, could and should provide helpful information as to how we become a better city. Regardless of where you stand on secession, we need the data, we need the analysis that's going to come as a result. And using that information will be our responsibility to look at how we improve the level of city services, how we improve the quality of life that we so often discuss, for every community throughout the city. And even if secession does happen, it's still years away. So I want to rise on behalf of my district and say, we can't afford to wait. There's communities throughout the city, both in the Valley and not in the Valley, that have waited for far too long for the basic city services, for all the things the city is supposed to provide. So I say, let's let the study happen. I support the study happening, but let's keep our focus now on how we improve and service every community, every one of our constituents, every resident of the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, nothing but another political football. And politicians are using the people in the Valley as pawns, puppets, trying to make political gain for those who have high aspirations, even from Sacramento, they're coming all the way down here in the district, they don't even represent, saying, we'll give you the money, just vote for, remember, remember, vote for me, I'm running. We'll give you the money, keep me in mind, I was on your side. What is that, well, they don't even know what side they're on. They don't even know what position they really want to take on this issue. For example, when we shut down Harperian Services to all of the Valley, my God, what's going to happen to them? They're going to be a smelly place to live in. I mean, why don't we just tell them the truth? We're one city underground, no matter what you say, for the services, water, sanitation system. It's going to always be that way. Because you know what? Once the facts are on the table, they still are not going to change. They're going to say, we like it the way it is, it's too costly to change. And the law is clear, you've already told, even in Mr. Mo, in Mr. Burnson's motion, third paragraph, he says that the intent was to contribute our appropriate share, 10%, in order that Lafco could fulfill the responsibility as governed by state law. Now, the city attorney's already defined what's being governed by state law, but he goes on to say that in paragraph four, a comprehensive fiscal analysis is required, as required by state law. I mean, that's double talking. City attorney's position is correct, state law is correct, and I want them to reiterate the legislation or the law which says that we are not permitted to use the money other than already specified within the agreement. Mr. Tim Lekoska, did you hear that?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I mean, you're using my time. Reiterate the law which states that we're only allowed to use the money for a specific purpose, and that was authored by.
Yes, under the, under the Cortez-Zydine Act, the proposers proposed the, the change of organization.
Then you respond to paragraph four.
And Lafco, Lafco analyzes.
Will you push your button, man? I've got about 30 seconds left.
Lafco analyzes and can modify the proposal, but, but is responsible for analyzing the proposal as submitted and then modifying or approving.
All right, then in paragraph four, it says here, if you read it, $265,000 to Lafco to be used by Lafco to conduct a comprehensive fiscal analysis as required by state law. There's a difference there. Now, they can, Lafco can do it as required by state law, which is clear, with all the other money, but according to state law, they cannot do it as governed by state law using our money, and it's clear, go get the county council, they will tell you, so go on back over there and leave us alone. What are the county council positions? All right, then, then I want the council to report on it. I mean, how can they disagree? They can't disagree with state law, they can disagree with, the state law is clear, is that not correct? City, Mr. City Attorney?
Under the Cortez-Zydine Act, Lafco plays a role of a reviewer of a proposal, not the maker of a proposal. That's the distinction.
Do you differ with that?
All right, Mr. Holden.
Oh, in closing, Mr. President, I just, and I won't push my button again, I just, they used my time up. I just want to say for 15 seconds.
Okay, you're not going to push your button again. I won't recognize you.
And you don't push my button either, and I won't ask to push my button.
Go ahead.
Anyway, basically, I just want to say that I've always voted against this separation, they pretended to separate, because there are people out there in the Valley, I can tell you, say to me, Mr. Holden, we like it the way it is, we cannot afford to support ourselves. And I can understand Mr. Burnson and Mr. Wax saying, and I would probably be saying the same thing, they saying, if they want to go, let my people go. Is that what they're saying? Let my people go.
Okay, and we're going to annex the Marina, I think, next. Ms. Goldberg.
I apologize, I arrived a little late, and I really just want to ask a basic question. What does changing the language actually do that we could, they could not do if we didn't change the language?
Well, we have essentially a condition placed upon the use of city funds. If we, if the Burnson motion, Burnson-Wax motion carries, you've essentially said you're going to rely exclusively on state law without being specific about it. I think the difference is that at least you're being specific with regard to the condition now in place, and as compared to simply relying upon their interpretation.
Can you give me an example of something which might be done if this motion passes, which could not be done if it didn't pass?
No, there won't be, I think in either instance, if the initial fiscal analysis as they had conceived it before were undertaken and involved the design of governments, I think in either event, we would claim that currently it would be violative of the city condition on the funds. If that condition were not there, and instead we had the Burnson-Wax condition, we would also maintain that is a violation of the law. But you have, the difference between the general and specific.
So there's no effect, in essence, in doing this?
Well, there is no, I think there is an effect. I mean, I think that you.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to ascertain. What is the effect?
You've put, you've put the Lafco on notice in a very specific way as to a concern, and this concern is not arising in a vacuum. But last August, Lafco was considering having these initial fiscal analyses that involve Lafco designing governmental, these, these other governments. And I think the difference is that, at that time, they deferred whether or not they were going to do it. But now, at least you have that as part of the background. And the condition you have in place essentially targets that and says, we do not agree that that would be a lawful alternative for Lafco to pursue.
All right, so we're saying, we're saying with the Burnson motion, that now, we're saying though, that, that we still take the same position, with or without the motion, you must follow the law, and you may not pursue areas which are not within your charter by the state to do.
That's correct. I, I think you're in a stronger position if you retain the current condition. It's a question of degree.
So we're in a stronger position if we don't pass the Burnson motion?
Yeah, from a strictly legal standpoint. Now, in terms of, of the policy and the interrelationship of the city with Lafco, those are other considerations that rightly you can bring to bear as to whether or not to go with that motion. But just looking at it purely from a legal standpoint, you're in a stronger position if you retain that condition, and you might also wish to consider having this body adopt the August 1999 letter to Lafco. That would give you maximum legal strength in terms of your position.
Thank you.
Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. You know, one of the concerns that I have have been articulated by Mr. Wax, in that when we had our ad hoc committee on secession, there was a distinct series of recommendations that were forwarded to this council in regards to the appropriation of the funds, which I believe during the process of working its way towards the council, that there was a different understanding of what the funding would pay for. In Mr. Burnson's motion, I think, to correct the record, it says $265,000 for the study, but that is broken down as $225,000 for the Valley portion of the study, and $40,000 for the Harbor areas portion of the study, which is a total of 265. Just for the record, I wanted to correct that. For those who have been interested in the secession issue during this period of time, it was also represented by one of you colleagues, that it, this seems like areas of means from the city wanting to detach itself from areas not of means. But in the case of the Harbor area, you have a community not of means, Wilmington, that also would like to have an opportunity at self-determination, and a portion of Harbor City that would like to have the same, and also a portion of San Pedro, certain portions of San Pedro cannot adequately be described as its neighborhoods of means. So I think the issue, more than trying to quote, "break apart" the city, are individual neighborhoods and communities that want to have an opportunity to self-govern and be able to have all the information to make a prudent and rational decision. I think we always muddy this issue when we think that all of a sudden, this is going to trigger a secession vote. What we are trying to do here is to have the resources available that when a secession vote comes before us, that all of the information is available in order that the voters, both in the parts that would want to remain part of the City of Los Angeles and those who want to leave, would have all the information before them to make a prudent and rational decision. With that said, I would like to ask of the city attorneys, if the Burnson motion does not pass today, where does that leave us?
It leaves the current condition in place.
And the current condition saying?
Says that the monies that the city is providing are to be used for the review and analysis of data, not for the development of specific proposals to break up the city.
Okay. Now, you had also said, Mr. Merkin, that state law precludes Lafco from developing those proposals?
We believe it does, yes.
Okay, but then, of course, you're a Los Angeles city attorney. One of the things to which I would also like to understand is that throughout this entire process, those who have been the initiators of the secession or the detachment movement knew that there were going to be bumps in the road all the way along, and that they knew that there were going to be hurdles that would be placed in their path if they proceeded in this, in this regard. I find it unfortunate that we did not ask, and maybe now would be an appropriate time, to ask Lafco, Lafco's council, if they interpret state law the same as the city attorney does in regards to that funding being restricted. In fact, does Lafco have its council here? Mr. Calamine, do you have your council here today?
No.
Okay. Mr. Calamine, would you be prepared to answer that question, whether or not you're interpreting that restriction the same as the Los Angeles city attorney is? And then, thank you, Mr. Furrow.
Would you turn him on?
Hello?
Mr. Calamine?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes. One of the disagreements that stems between county council, Lafco staff, and your city attorneys is a simple fact that no applicant can possibly present Lafco with a plan until it has some data. And they don't have the data. We have not assembled the data yet. And what you look upon as the step one process where the applicant is to provide a plan, they can't possibly do it until Lafco has collected the data and put it together and laid it before the applicant.
All right, thank you. Mr. Adetun?
Actually, the condition does not speak to that aspect of it at all. They can, in fact, gather the data, and the city's position has been that we have a responsibility to provide the data and the information to Lafco and to the applicant. The condition is relative to, and I'll read it, shall not be used to develop specific proposals to break up the City of Los Angeles into separate cities. It has nothing to do with the data, city has maintained all along. And the, by the way, on the, when the council adopted that there were two, two committee reports before them, and they adopted the budget and finance, which did include the condition. And oral discussion is.
Ms. Galanter.
I wasn't here the day the council voted on this, so I did not have the opportunity to vote no on the whole thing. I would like to say publicly, since I haven't had a chance to do that yet, that I think people who want to secede should pay for the costs. And every time the public sector, whether it's state government, county government, or the city government indulges people in their hobbies, it makes it more fun and more exciting and stimulates more people to do the same thing. It's been my impression, although I can't say with certainty that it's always the case, that most secession movements are started by people who lost a city council election. You laugh, but it's true. And the, and I, I mean, and so we pay them for, then we, then we indulge the fact that they're upset that they lost. Of course, I understand why they're upset that they lost. I wouldn't like losing an election either. But to then cost the, the government the money, any level of government, the money we would be using otherwise to provide the services that they complain they have to leave because they're not getting, is nuts. And I'm sort of in a dilemma here today, because the council, when I wasn't here, already voted to spend the money. Lafco has the same obligations, whether it's our money or anybody else's money, to generate objective data and make that data available to anybody who may have an interest in the outcome. Our money is, is just gravy in the pot, because the people who want the secession study don't, either don't want to or aren't able to come up with the cost without having the government pay for it. And I just think the government paying for it is wrong. It's not as if we don't have other things for, to spend the money on, like. It's not as if we don't have other things for, to spend the money on, like fixing the streets and providing clean water and, and doing something about traffic lights and on-ramps and off-ramps. There's plenty of stuff that is appropriately government's financial responsibility, but paying for somebody's hobby horse is not. And I, I, what I want to do here is try to make the best of a bad situation. The bad situation is, we've already committed a bunch of city money that won't be available for trimming the trees as a result. But I want to make sure that we, that it is spent as, that we are able to specify as precisely as possible how we spend it, since you all voted for it.
Ms. Walters.
I want to thank Ms. Galanter for making the clearest statement on this that has yet to be made. Sometimes I think we're playing Alice in Wonderland with this stuff. I think that we should be on record, as every other lawmaker should be on record, of telling these folks, "No, there are limits with your children. There are limits. There are times when you have to say no." And certainly, our constituents are not our children, but to play to a few dissidents that are whipping up the flames for this, including the newspaper out there, is just sheer insanity. This is one city, and it's time we make it work as one city. And I don't see why we have to kowtow to these folks and make nice with them when what they're after is destruction for their own purposes. LAFCO's attorney, somebody raised, "What does LAFCO's attorney think?" What LAFCO's attorney thinks is immaterial to this body. It's not to him we look for advice, it's the city attorney's office to whom we are bound to look for advice. And I think we need to start acting like council members of the entire city of Los Angeles and get out here and let these people know, "It's one city, and we're not going to be patsies for their headline grabbing to get it broken up into something else that a few people want to do." And I think it's time to just stop this nonsense.
Dr. Burnson.
Well, you know, it's the kind of, kind of rhetoric that you just heard, it's the kind of rhetoric that you just heard that have inflamed people to the point where they feel that they have no other course other than to seek their own government. Now, I think, there's no question if we went around this circle, and I'm going to eliminate myself because as your representative on LAFCO, I have to maintain a judicial neutral position. But I think if we went around this circle, I doubt if there would be one vote, openly vote, that would say, "We're for secession right now." That's not the point. The point is that people of Los Angeles, a portion of Los Angeles, or portions, have petitioned to have LAFCO do a study and to make a determination. Now, all you're doing by your actions is saying, "To heck with you." I mean, that's how it's going to be portrayed. I can see Rick Orloff sitting here tomorrow, and I can predict the headlines, what the headlines are going to be. The headlines are going to be, "They do it to the valley again, under the harbor."
And the overpaid council members.
And they overpay council members, that's right. And they'd be right about some of us. But anyway.
Wait a minute, John.
Just hold my time while you're-
Slow down, John.
Anyway, members of the council, look, the time to, to do, to give your fight, if you believe that the city should not be separated, is after all the cards have been laid on the table. Right now, what you're doing is just inflaming and giving the opposition and people that want to tear the city apart ammunition. You're saying, "This is just another example of how they treat us." And I must tell you that there are times when people do feel that way, and, and what you call inflammatory editorials may not be totally far from the truth. So, you know, and as far as, as far as divorcing the poor parts of the city, the truth of the matter is that state law says that this must be revenue neutral. So if it's revenue neutral, how are they abandoning all these poor people that you're talking about? I mean, you know, it just doesn't make sense. Look, the best course of action for this city to take, and I'm speaking now not as a LAFCO commissioner, I'm speaking as a member of the city council, if we want to give the city an opportunity to say that we're being fair, is just pass this motion, which does, does nothing but say, "Obey the state law in doing your study." And that's all it does. And I did this in, as, as a conciliatory thing, to try to smooth the thing out so we're not appear to be heavy-handed and try to slow down the work of LAFCO, which is empowered by the state. And I want to tell you something else about the city attorney's opinion that I disagree with. And I think county council disagrees with it, and ultimately, I think a court is going to disagree with it. And that is that we have the responsibility at LAFCO of reviewing and analyzing the data that is collected. And your city, you have a pine there, I heard you do it, that that is not within our scope. Well, that's not true. It is within our scope. And that's all that, I'm sorry, I'm not going to debate with you right now, Fred, but anyway, the point is that what we, what, what is going to be done by LAFCO is simply to analyze data. The people ultimately will decide what they want to do. The people will decide, not this city council, not LAFCO, not the county council, not the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Merkin.
Let me just finish, but I won't push my button again. I would just, one more thing I want to tell you. Tomorrow, I had to stop LAFCO at the last meeting from declining the city's money and going to court. I asked for a week or so till this date because tomorrow they are meeting, and tomorrow, if we don't pass this, I guarantee you, you will not make the decision. Some judge will.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I've been listening to the debate, and parts of it have been amusing. But for me, the most important thing that's been said is that what we're doing here is providing clarity in our position. And I find it interesting that I'm being asked to vote on something that removes clarity in our position. Generally, we're accused of being vague and not very clear in what direction we want to go in, and for the first time, in terms of being on the council, I'm being asked to actually remove clarity. I don't think it's inconsistent to want to have this type of position. I think it puts us in a stronger legal position. And as a, as a trained attorney, I really believe that it's always in our best interest to be in the strongest legal position. I have read and reviewed the condition. I think the fact that we are contributing $265,000 to, for the review and analysis of data, but not to be used to develop specific proposals, is a clear division of responsibility. It is our responsibility to provide the data. It's not our responsibility to do the valley votes work or harbor votes work in providing the proposals. I am going to vote against the help Burnson motion because I believe that our prior position clearly separates our responsibility, clearly provides the petitioners or the applicants with the data that they need to, to develop their proposals, but at the same time, does not provide a gift to the applicants from the government in developing the proposal. So I would ask that we not support the Burnson motion at this point and stick to the original well-reasoned position that was adopted in December. Thank you.
Ms. Skakowsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think that Mr. Pacheco just said very well what is there. There, we ought not to obfuscate the issue. The legal opinion is there. Our judgment, the legal judgment that has been provided, as well as the city council's adopted, adopting that position, is that LAFCO should not design a government. LAFCO should spend public money to review, to analyze, and then the applicants, the proposals, wherever they come, from whatever areas, ought to design the government and submit it to LAFCO. That's what this condition says. It's very clear. If we take it out, the condition is still inherent and implicit, so why not leave it in, state it? And the reason it's important, and as Mr. Burnson has said, LAFCO may decide to sue us tomorrow over it, then it will go to a judge. But our attorney is saying to us that that's where, that they legally believe it's appropriate. It's also legally appropriate because that is public money. Should public money from a, an area in West LA be used to present, to prepare a city separation in the harbor or prepare a city separation, prepare a government that separates from the valley? I think not. The applicants in those areas clearly should. LAFCO should clearly sit there and be an independent arbiter, an independent judge of equity, of value, after helping provide the basic data. But LAFCO should not design the government. That's what that, that's all that condition says. And that's what we believe is appropriate for LAFCO. We believe it's fair. We believe that we should give the money. The council opined that, even though there are others here who don't think that that should be the case. All we're saying is be straightforward about it, be straight up about it, and if LAFCO can accept that, then in fact, early on, we probably should have that issue tested in another court because of the two different legal opinions. But our legal opinion is very clear, supported by those on the staff, not only legally, but who work with LAFCO on a regular basis. And so I believe that the language should stay there for clarity. It's what the city did before, and nothing changes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Fewer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I, I tried to propose that we attempt to mediate this in a calm, cool way because there are bigger issues to fight down the road. The groundswell of support for that idea has been deafening here. So let me, let me try a different approach because flexibility, if nothing else, is something we have to be, I have to have. I, I want to say, with due respect to my friend, Mr. Wax, with whom I agree on most issues, we did have an explicit conversation on the council floor on this issue. I remember it because I participated in it. So I, I think it's really important for us to at least say what's going on here, and what is not going on here is some behind-the-scenes attempt to betray the voters on some level. This was a public conversation. But let's go on. Recall the condition again that's at issue, says, "Don't formulate specific proposals on how to break up the city." I want to get back to that in the context of the RFP in one second. But I also got to say, with regard to the city attorney's role in this, for, one reason that we're in this situation is, and this goes to the heart of the issue, we've been told for months in writing and orally by the city attorney's office that state law does not actually provide adequate protections to promote the goal that everybody unanimously here has said is a good idea, and that is, "Objective analysis," and so forth and so forth. That was very much in the background of all the work that has gone forward so far. We do need to have the city attorney's office speak with one voice on that issue. It either is adequate or it's not adequate, but unfortunately, we've been getting mixed signals at this point. But the one thing that's clear, Mike, just one second, please. The one thing that's clear, I don't think, at least thinking for myself, that we want to set up the conditions for a lawsuit on this issue. That's a bad idea. Now, usually, as a lawyer, usually clarity precludes lawsuits and uncertainty creates the conditions for it. But having said that too, let's go back and look at the RFP, because maybe if we're not going to have a group discussion and some summit somewhere, we can just do it right now. What's confusing to me is, I, I'm looking at the language of the RFP, and I'm not even quite sure to whom to address this observation, but I think that Mr. Calamine is saying, "We don't intend to use your money to formulate specific proposals to break up the city." I think. Understand that if that, and I see Mr. Calamine shaking his head, yes, if you don't intend to do that, this is why I'm concerned about if we have much ado about nothing here, if that wasn't the intent, and that's the condition, then what's the disagreement about? But if we're not going to hash that out in some summit somewhere, let me at least look at the RFP. I am looking at all the elements of the RFP, and none of them, and I need somebody to disagree with me if I'm wrong, none of them says, "We're going to use, we're going to seek specific proposals or formulate them to break up the city." And someone needs to clarify for me, again, in the much ado about nothing context, if the RFP doesn't say, "Formulate proposals to break up the city." If Mr. Calamine is saying, "I don't want to formulate proposals to break up the city with the city's money." If the city council, I think unanimously in November, said, "We don't want to do that either," what is the fight about?
You've said that. Ms. Goldberg.
Well, could somebody answer the question? Is there something?
Yes, I can. If I may answer. The draft RFP last August, the one that had the initial fiscal analysis as part of it, had, among other things, in the initial fiscal analysis, a three-year projection of revenues and expenditures. This is before now the proposals come from the applicant. LAFCO's own consultant would do a three-year projection of revenues and expenditures. How can you project revenues and expenditures unless you've designed the government? You can't do it. You have to know whether it's going to be LAPD, their own police department, sheriff's department, all kinds of, startup costs have to be factored into that. In addition, the initial fiscal analysis called for the preparation of alternative methods of delivering services. That is design. That is design work. And so it was only that part of it that we objected to, it was not the rest of it. We have no objection, there's no legal infirmity in reviewing data provided for by the city, making sure it's relevant and sufficient and adequate for the use by the applicant.
Ms. Goldberg.
Now, see, I just heard something I hadn't heard before, that we could be sued? On what basis could we be sued over any of this?
Yeah, I, I'm very skeptical about the ability to be sued. This is, the city has no obligation to provide any funding for the study whatsoever.
Okay, so we, we have no obligation to provide funding, yet we did, which is good. I voted for it. Okay. Now, what you're saying to us is, is that there is a body of law from the state of California that governs LAFCO, and that all we're saying, if we vote no on today's motion, is, is that we want to make sure that the conditions are that you have to spend it on what that body of law permits? Is that what a no vote means?
No, I think the, the no vote says that you, you like the condition, the specific condition-
Right.
You prefer that than the general condition of obey the law.
Okay. But it's saying that what we mean when we say obey the law is, analyze all the data you want-
Correct.
But don't create new governments.
That's right.
Makes sense to me, thank you. But we can't be sued whichever way we do anything.
Yeah, I, I don't know of a basis-
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Holden, you violated your promise, but I'll give you two minutes.
I rise for a point of personal privilege, and that is to share with Mr. Burnson that I didn't intend to infer that he was aspiring for higher office. He said he's going to leave office after his term expires, and so he, he has no axe to grind here, and I would admit to agree with that. But I also want to say that he's real emphatic by stating that he's a neutral party and that he is a member of LAFCO. And whereas he's not recusing himself because he put in a motion in, but he just wanted to make sure that, at least in his mind, the right thing is done, and I wanted to say that. But after having said that, Mr. President, if they're going to gather the facts, the law is clear. I don't see why LAFCO just don't walk away from the table as if this motion was never introduced and go on and do its job. The Cartezzi-Knox Act clearly states that they must be in compliance with that. That is a legislative intent. That was adopted a number of years ago. They cannot deviate from that act if they are to be in compliance, that is, LAFCO, being compliant with state law if they go, as they go about doing their business. Therefore, as Mr. Fewer says, what is the beef? And there should not be any beef. LAFCO cannot get off track, cannot violate in any way or deviate from the state law. State law is clear. Cartezzi-Knox is already expressed, is already expressed in the law, that this, in any city, not just this city, any city cannot put forth the people's money for the purpose of developing a plan to succeed. That's why we have LAFCO. Otherwise, we don't need LAFCO if that's going, if that's what the intent was to be. And so, Mr. President, members, I also, I know I got four seconds, but let me just say I got a minute, and I won't take it all. We gave the $265,000 of all the people's money in this city. What's fair about that? Nothing. What's unfair about it? We didn't ask the people in the area from which they're succeeding whether or not they can use their money to support a segment of the city to succeed. Makes no sense to me, and it's just not right. So, you know, I'm going to, I'm with Burnson, but I'm, I've got to go.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Members of the council, just to interrupt this for just a minute, we have 21 students from Hanover University in Hanover, Germany. They're here today, and they're studying geography, and, and we'll tell them about the secession and the geography of the city of Los Angeles. Would they please stand up? Welcome to Los Angeles. Thank, thank. All right, Mr. Han, can we have some quiet, please? Mr. Hernandez.
I just, again, also want to stand up. Ms. Galanter made little sense to me, and my understanding is, there's nothing that said we had to give them the money?
That's correct.
That's correct.
And if Mr. Bernson is now talking about a threat of a lawsuit, is part of our solution to that threat just to withdraw the money? If we withdraw the money at this time, can we be sued?
No, Mr. Hernandez, but I think that, just staff response to that, I think there is a responsibility of the city that when some citizens want to do a reorganization, that the data and the analysis of that data in the context of Cortezi, that it should, we should participate in that process.
No, but isn't also the responsibility once the citizens wants their tree trimmed or the city, title's fixed?
I agree.
And, and we have to set our priorities.
No question.
But, no, and I'm asking a legal question, Mr. Bernson. I need to know a legal answer. If we do not give them the money, can they sue us for not giving them the money?
No, I don't, I don't believe they can.
You know, members of council, I don't know if you heard that, but I think that a motion should be entertained to withdraw the funding of the money. And I'm not sure I want to make that motion at this time. But I am entertaining it. I am entertaining it. And it's, it sounds kind of funny to me because here we're trying to participate in a process, and I think that we're trying to do it really, and I'm going to be honest, several of my colleagues are running for office, and they represent the valley. And we want them to appease their constituents. I took note when Mr. Shavornich was mentioning Wilmington that he didn't mention South Central LA, which he also represents. But, you know, let's be real open about this thing, and, and that's what this is about, when you break it down. And that's why I want my colleagues to understand that I'm not willing to make the motion to withdraw the funding, because I understand you have to represent your constituents. But I need you to understand that I have to represent mine, and the actions that were taken are harmful to mine, and it makes no sense. But I just want that clarity, because it's clear to me that there is no grounds for this lawsuit people are trying to threaten us with.
One second. Escalante.
Somebody said earlier that this, I think it was Mr. Bernson, but somebody, several people said earlier that this is all going to be reported as who's for and who's against secession. And I frequently read affirmative, definitive statements about my position that nobody's ever asked me about. I would like to say that this is not about whether you're for or against secession. This is about who's going to pay for the study with whose money. The study has to be done in any case. The people who propose secession are entitled to, once I've gotten the signatures, they're entitled to have this analysis done. I agree that they're entitled to have the analysis done. And I'll be as interested in any, as anybody else, in seeing the analysis when it's done. I just don't think it's appropriate for the public sector to be paying for the analysis of, it would be like the public sector paying for a developer who's got a proposal to redevelop a part of the city, coming in and saying, "Now, I want a study, I want to do it this way, and it's going to need some studies, and so you, the city, should pay for all the studies, even though I'm the one who wants to do the development project." In this case, it's, it's a secession movement. We pay for studies that we need as a city in order to administer city funds. But since this is a study about what it would take to get out of the city, it's not something that involves administering the city funds until there's a proposal on the table. And you've explained several times that it's the advocates, that state law says it's the advocates of secession or of a new city who have to make the proposal. So I think all we're talking about here is who's going to hand money over to Lafco to do the study that Lafco has to do. And Lafco has a problem, because it is going to cost them a lot of money to do the study. But I don't think the problem before us, or the issue before us as a council today, is whether we are for or against secession. And while I'm intrigued by Mr. Hernandez's idea, I think it is not a good idea, having voted to spend the money, to turn around now and say we want to pull the money back. So I'm not going to make the motion either, even though I deeply regret not having been able to vote against it when, when it came up the first time. But I, I, at the risk of repeating myself, think we ought to be as precise as possible about what the public's money that would otherwise be used to provide actual city services is going to be used for, since it won't be used to provide actual city services.
Mr. Wax.
Oh, boy. Mr. Deaton, did the state condition its money?
Nope.
Did the county condition its money?
Nope.
You know, Mr. Fuhr was sort of frustratingly saying, "Oh, I don't understand what it's all about." You know, all of this has been so unnecessary. If the state law does not allow Lafco to develop the proposals, it won't. If the state law does allow Lafco to do it, and we don't want them to do it with our money, they'll do it with the other 90% of the money and use ours for review. Nothing, I mean, I mean, this whole thing has just been generated into something that is absolutely unnecessary, except that it brings out all the other issues that are really driving this discussion today. Let's leave that for an honest debate when the time comes on the underlying issue of keeping this city together versus dividing it apart. And not, this whole thing has, is really not going to have served any purpose other than just to have furthered a lot of agendas. And I'm sorry, Mr. Merkin, you keep on fueling this pot and boiling it over for something that, believe me, if they can't do it, they won't. And if they can, they'll use, they'll just earmark our $265,000 for something and use the other 80% of it, 90% of it for something else. And so why are we making all of this to do about this? Why are we having one legal opinion after another, one set of letters that starts to fuelize, one set of motions here? I mean, this is all unnecessary, except to, in fact, further other agendas. Sorry. And I, you know, it's almost not going to matter which way we vote on this.
Very interesting that you say that.
Yeah, yeah, it is, John, we all have.
Of course you do.
But, but, but the point of this is, it's almost not going to matter legally which way we end up voting, and what, what will have come out in the pure debate itself will have been the sum and substance of what this is all about. It's not going to make a hill of beans a difference, Fred. It really isn't, and you know it's not.
If I, Mr. President, if I might just make a comment, I do believe that is the truth. The fact of the matter is, though, who is raising the issues and whose agendas we're talking about? Because the fact is, is that if I would have been at that, at the other end, I probably would have done just what you said, which I would have spent our money on one thing and their money on something else. I, quite frankly, though, I have to come back to Mr. Fuhr's position, what is the big deal?
All right, Mrs. Chick.
Yes, I'm going to yield my time to Mr. Fuhr in the hopes that maybe we have a solution that we can move forward with that's acceptable to all.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Mr. Merkin, your attention is actually required. I hate to say that, but once in a while, I actually need you for this thing. The, the, here's the deal, I meant in a positive way. Here's the deal. I talked to Mr. Calamine about seven or eight speakers ago, and Mr. Calamine said, "You know, the condition was fine. I was recommending that the whole thing go to Lafco, it was no big deal." And I, I don't like to do this, but I kind of have to here, but when the city attorney's letter came in, it escalated things, it caused problems and so forth, but the condition before the letter was fine. Now, I know Fred to be a very smart, hard-working, well-intentioned guy who devotes with great skill, all kinds of stuff to his work, so that's not the point.
We're talking about the same guy.
You bet.
Who is this person?
You bet. But that's always a prelude to making a suggestion. And, that's right. That's right. No, I'm not going to slam Fred, but I'm going to, I'm going to ask the council to take, to take a different action. I'm going to try a different approach. The condition was fine. So, if the council were to officially make a statement that the letter that Mr. Merkin wrote is, is not part of the record here, that the council, our lawyer wrote a letter, but the letter does not reflect the sense of the council or something to, in effect, that doesn't undermine any future positions, but by the same token, takes it basically out of the record. I think Mr. Calamine says, and I don't want to put words in Larry's mouth either, "Fine, because he was recommending the thing." This is why the much ado about nothing point. And why can't we do that?
There's one thing missing. Here's the problem. There's one thing missing. Has Mr. Calamine told you that the Lafco will not do the IFAs as they had designed them last August?
Okay, and, and you're.
In other words, in other words, it's, it's one thing to say the condition presents no problem, because Mr. Calamine's report to Lafco said, his, his written report said, "This condition that the city's attached is really, at the surface, it seemed to be a problem, but it really isn't a problem, because Lafco's not involved in making proposals till the very end of the process," which seemed to suggest that they're not going to be doing the IFAs, but that's not a determination by Lafco as a body itself. So are they willing to say they're not going to be doing it?
You know, I like, we are actually doing the mediation I wanted. Can Mr. Calamine, on the balance of my time, respond, if we get to yes and go on to other things today?
Well, not do I basis, it's a very public.
It's difficult to be a mediator.
We're trying here, we're trying.
All right, I can respond to Mr. Merkin only in the following fashion, that Lafco is a state-authorized agency. We will not be put in a position where the city of Los Angeles is going to dictate to us how we do this.
No, but this is not the mediation part. Try, try the other approach here. How can we get to yes here?
You know, the problem is, Mr. Merkin's letter of January 23rd escalated the condition of, of your funding, which was a simple one as far as we were concerned.
And acceptable, correct?
And acceptable, because I could always spend the $265,000 of the city on a portion of the study that had nothing to do with the proposal.
Right.
But his letter then stepped, set out four or five more conditions, which it was clear to the commission was nothing more than a paper trail to set up Lafco for a lawsuit. And we refused.
Okay, Larry, what if, so what if you just said at this point, maybe this is how we get to it, you'll send this, you'll spend the city's money on things other than, on specific proposal creation, call it a day, and everybody says, "We're fine." What about that? I'm still trying here, let me help work with this.
That's fine, and that's agreeable to me, and I think it'd be agreeable to the commission, provided that this city took a formal action today withdrawing Mr. Merkin's letter of January 23rd as the city's official position regarding this issue.
Can't we put the whole thing to one side and just say that's how the money would be, because I'm sure we're going to get to that point in this conversation here. We all want the money to go, but to have it to be devoted to the purpose you just described and call it a day. Can we not just do that?
I, I can't speak for my commission.
Can you recommend to your commission that's what be done?
If it was specific that the $265,000 funded by the city of Los Angeles be spent by Lafco for those portions of the study of collecting data only, or this sort of thing, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
The problem I have is an accounting problem, quite frankly. When, when we negotiated this whole funding system with the state, the county, and the city of 80, 10, and 10, it is presumed that as we spend money, it would be allocated on that same basis of 80, 10, and 10. Now, what you're asking me to do is a whole different accounting system.
But, but is it that, I mean, having run an organization where we had multiple funding sources, different constraints on each of them and so forth, I know it is a very doable thing, because I did this before I, I came here. I think we have a yes here.
Okay.
If you can go ahead and move in that direction, and if we have, you're committed to do that, I think we should just move the question and call it a day.
Well, I don't think I can commit to that, and for the following reason. By way of example, if we decided to spend the city's $265,000 first, before any proposals are done, it's conceivable we don't spend the full $2,000, $2,650,000. Let's say I'm a good enough administrator, I can do it for $2 million. Therefore, the city's portion is really only $200,000, even though you funded 265. You're entitled to a rebate, but if I've already spent it, I got a problem.
Okay. All right, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Previous question.
But what is it now? That was helpful, we can't quite finish.
All right, prepare the roll on the previous question. Which would cut off debate.
15 ayes.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Must be lunchtime.
Ms., Ms. Skowski, would you explain your motion?
My motion, I think what is on the floor is the Bernson motion, and I'm recommending a no vote.
All right. All right, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, eight noes.
That failed. The next item.
Item number 26.
You know, we're going to take item 26 and then 41. So item 26, there has been a public hearing on this already. Ms. Galanter.
Can we take a vote to take back the letter and see what happens? Never mind, never mind.
Ms. Ms. Galanter on 26. Yeah.
The last I heard, I was Ms. Galanter.
Wait, wait, before, before we start, Mrs. Waller wants to be recorded as a no vote on item 10 and 11.
11 and 12.
11 and 12, I'm sorry. 11 and 12. Okay, there's no objections, and it doesn't change the vote. All right, Ms. Galanter.
Yes, thank you. Mr. President, this item was heard in council the other day, and both Mr. Holden and Mr. Wax, and I guess Mr. Bernson as well, had a series of questions. We wound up continuing the item, and we have a number of people from the L.A. World Airports here today, who I think probably ought to make a presentation to the council explaining what the item actually is and why it is that you've recommended doing this. And then I expect the people who had questions last time will have questions again.
We're, we are on an item 26 now. It's, it changes the vote, Mr. Holden.
It does not change the vote.
Huh?
No, it makes 09 to 77.
Oh, you, you, how did you vote?
Yeah, and I just wanted.
Okay, there's no objections, Mr. Holden, be recorded as a no vote.
Does that put me on the winning side, Mr. President?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, could we have some quiet, please? Sergeant, would you make sure all these people around here are, and Mr., all right. Lydia, you want to give us a report?
Lydia Cunard, Los Angeles World Airports. This is a transaction, it was a voluntary acquisition. The owners of the Travelodge and Denny's Restaurant that's located at the northeast corner of Century Boulevard and Aviation came to the airport about a year ago and asked if we might be interested in purchasing this property. This is a strategically located piece of property in that it is adjacent to the Manchester Square Residential Acquisition Program. In our long-term master plan program, this area is slated for the development of additional cargo to support the master planning effort.
Anything else you want to add?
We'd be happy to walk you through the financial details of this deal if you'd like.
Okay. Ms., go ahead, do that, and then I'll call on Ms. Galanter.
Okay, I'm going to turn to Ray Anderson, our deputy in charge of property.
Because this was a willing seller, we were approached and secured appraisal services from Eve Williams here locally in the valley. The properties were appraised in three parcels, one, the Travelodge Hotel itself, secondly, the Denny's Restaurant, and third, five billboards located along Century Boulevard. Each one of the parcels were then appraised both on market value, replacement value, and income stream to drive at the fair market value for an offer to be made by the department. That offer in totality came in at $11.4 million. The request today is 11.6, which would cover the closing costs associated with those parcels. In addition to the acquisition, there is a leaseback also proposed with this transaction. The leaseback agreement was negotiated based on a return on investment, which would be equivalent to the 10-year treasury bond, which is also in excess of what the city or the department would realize on this investment if it was left in the city's general investment pool. So the average return on investment through the leaseback agreement is in excess of 5.5%. That is a summary of the two elements of the transaction, both the acquisition and the leaseback. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Hello? Okay. The questions that were asked last time, which you've both addressed, had to do with what the, the reason for acquiring the property might be and, and the financial, and so I don't want to go over those again. But I do want to point out that one of the problems we're facing in the very long period that is ahead of us before decision, final decisions are made on the potential expansion of the airport, is that they do have to keep operating. And the, the airport has a long history that predates both of these people by a lot of having acquired. people by a lot of having acquired property from people who did not want to sell it and disrupting the community in a very significant way. What we have been finding as the airport's traffic increases, which it has been doing steadily for a long time now, is that there are a number of property owners in the area who have decided they would like to get out. And one of the advantages of the site in question today is that it is not particularly because the Manchester Square residents came to the airport and came to me, surprised them the hell out of me frankly, and said, "We really want to be bought out so that we will have money to buy homes in areas that are not as noisy because we are already impacted by the activities that exist today at the airport, and so we would like the opportunity to have some money with which to buy another home." And the only way we're going to get that is to be able to sell our homes to somebody who's got enough money to buy them and can use a number of the homes, a number of the sites together. So the airport activities that impact residences are already in this location, and they have been for many years. By purchasing property that is in an area that is already impacted from a willing seller, it's certainly my hope that that will obviate the need, no matter what is ultimately decided about the expansion, to buy any property from an unwilling seller. And so the, I understand why all of you had questions last week when we talked about this. I think they were good questions. But I think the real answer here is that I'd much rather have the airport, as the representative of the area, I'd much rather have them buying property that is not going to be a contest over using it for some use that's not compatible with an airport than having them go out and buy up residential properties in a community that lost a lot of residential properties to the airport 30 or 40 years ago. So that's the reason that I was comfortable with supporting this and remain comfortable with supporting this, and I would urge you to do the same. I think it's appropriate to ask questions. It's appropriate to listen to the answers. If you have a problem with the answers, to raise that. But I think on balance, the thing to do is buy the property, that this particular property, since we've been given the chance to do so.
All right, Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I met with some representatives from the airport since the last meeting, and I learned that they have a sneaky plan in mind. The plan, Mr. President, is to go about expanding the airport without bringing the final expansion plan to the council, circumventing, and I want to say that if you're not listening, Ms. Glanter, circumventing the authority of the council, which is required prior to an expansion program. And what they're doing, they're acquiring parcels of land in the dark, piece by piece. And when the time comes to say, "Now, let's have an expansion," you say, "Oh, no." Then you say, "We already bought the land, and you authorized it." Now, how many dwelling units are we acquiring? 200 plus what?
Not in this parcel, no.
Yeah, well, come on, you listen to me now. How many have your target set on?
In this particular acquisition, it's only one.
I'm not talking about, in general, in this, in this area right here.
The Manchester Square, which is, we do need to clarify this. This is being financed under our noise mediation program.
I'm not asking you about it being financed. How many units you intend to acquire?
There are 1,985 units.
1,985. How many have you acquired so far?
So far, we have 230 hardship applications. Of those, 112 have been before you and Coors Esprit.
That's right. Now, we're trying to put it on the table. That's all I really wanted to do, and you give me good information. You put it before the council in batches. Batch one was 33 single-family dwelling units, five apartments. Batch two was 66 single dwelling units and eight duplexes. We already bought those. And you have some more batches on the drawing board, 15 units, another for 20 units, in that whole general area. That's what you've done. And then for this $11 million now, I ask what the comps are. The comps in the general area is about $15.99 per square foot on an average. That's the minimum. The max is $58.89. And you know where that property is located? On Lincoln Boulevard, 2560 Lincoln Boulevard, which is about 15, 20 miles away. That's a comp. That's not a comp. You know, we just take, not these people who are representative of the district, they're good people. But somebody decided, "Hey, let's make somebody happy. You go tell them you want to sell, and they'll buy, they have plenty of money." This whole dwelling units complex, we have a housing shortage. We're going to buy all these homes. Where are they going to go? I don't know where they're going to go. You're not making any preparations to receive them anywhere.
They're going to increase the value of the marina.
That is correct, Mr. President, and I can get out of there then.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Previous question, Mr. President. Well, I looked on the board, Mr. Waxen, and your name wasn't up there.
Prepare the roll on the previous question. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, three noes.
I'm going to make an exception and let Mr. Wax speak if there's no objections.
I had raised, Mr. Holden raised the issues last time that had piqued my interest. In following up on this, I think that there are two fundamental issues. Is it a good business deal on its own? And the second is, is it part of something else that this council should be involved in? I am also told that the airport now has plans ultimately to acquire the entire community, the entire Manchester Square community, which consists of what, 800 homes plus apartments plus commercial uses plus an elementary school, et cetera. That's taking off the market a huge amount of housing that already exists. It's 1,985 units, as I think you mentioned. Not too easy to build in the city of Los Angeles. Now, my understanding is that some, Ms. Glanter just said, some people have come to her and actually want that because they feel they can go to a more desirable place if they're bought out. But have we actually, do you, do you know whether the, how the rest of the community feels? Do the 1,985 people who live there want to be bought out? Does the school district want its elementary school to be bought out? I mean, have we had any real discussion on a very large issue of an airport going in and illicitly buying a neighborhood and all that that entails?
Yes, we've had a series of community meetings and outreaches over the last year. Again, this is a voluntary program. Anyone who does not wish to sell does not have to sell.
Well, wait a minute. It's, no, my real question is, has the entire community expressed itself? Because you may have a couple hundred people who voluntarily want to sell, and then you're going to come in, if you're going to come in and condemn the hundreds of homes who don't want to sell on the basis you've already bought these, we've got a problem that I'd rather address now and ascertain how people feel in advance rather than waiting to get to that point. It isn't about an unwilling buyer now. It's a question of what expression have you had from the entire community, not just the willing sellers right yet?
It's been very, very positive. We've also had lots of discussions with L.A. U.S.D., and we are monitoring the phasing in of the impacts on the school district as residents do move out. I want to assure you that we have no condemnation rights, so we will not be exercising any eminent domain until and if there is ever an entitlement associated with this land for development.
Wait a minute.
And that would have to come through the city council.
Okay, so if you want to do it, you'll get permission. I mean, it's not like you're saying you won't do it. It's like you're saying that when you want it, you'll condemn those who don't want to sell. You'll come for permission. I'm very worried about what we're putting into motion here without having a buy-in from the people who are going to be most directly affected, and that's the people who live there.
I think she said they. How many hearings have you had?
We've had numerous meetings, and I have our staff person here who can tell you the number of property owners, which is a very high percentage, who have already decided that they want to participate in this program. We've had very, very positive press. In fact, the community has come to us, and it really praised us for the way this project has been handled.
Do you want to give us, how many hearings did you have?
Prior to my joining the organization, I believe they had two, and they had a very large meeting in May of '99. Over 300 property owners were in attendance at that point.
And what was the result of the?
Okay, the result is, up to date, we've got a request for 230 hardship cases, and we've got 117 other interested applicants who do not qualify under hardship.
And is there any objections raised?
No, not till now.
Well, that's... Okay, the previous question now has been imposed, so prepare the roll on item 26. Prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, two noes.
That is approved. Okay, now we're going to take, Lydia, stay there because we're going to take 41, which is another airport matter. Ms. Glanter.
No.
Yeah.
Mr. President, on item number two, we have Chief Ware and Chief Prince on a relatively urgent item regarding...
On which one, what item?
42, regarding a fire station. It's a simple matter that can be disposed of.
We're going to take the...
And can we take that next, please?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay. You want to give us a report on 41?
Yes. In November, there was a meeting of the city council at Van Nuys, and they heard the issue of a proposed non-addition rule out at Van Nuys Airport. The council asked Los Angeles World Airport staff and the city attorney's office to come back and answer several questions. Before you, it's a request that the FAA council also be present when the report is given back to the council.
All right, Mr. Wax.
Could I just, I'd like to amend this. The issue was whether or not we could adopt the non-addition rule now and still adopt further regulations later, and we'd asked the city attorney and the staff to try to clarify that with the FAA. To my, they have not yet received an answer, but Congressman Sherman on his own wrote a letter and received an answer. And it seemed to me that it would be really helpful, this is scheduled to come back into council on February 23rd, and it seemed to me that it would really be helpful when it came back to the council that the, that the council, chief counsel for the FAA be there. Now, I understand that, you know, the issue is to have him there. If he can't be there on that day, I'd like to sort of amend this, Mr. President, to say that if he can't be there on the 23rd, that if there's a date that he can come, say, within the next three or four weeks, and then when it came to the 23rd, we would continue, we would continue the meeting. So I just don't want to give him an ultimatum, come on the 23rd. The question is to invite him to come, it's now scheduled for discussion on the 23rd. If that's not convenient, could he pick a date, a council date, in the next couple of weeks after that, and then we'll, and if he agrees, then we'll schedule, we'll continue it and schedule ours till that time. But the main thing is to invite him and give him some flexibility. It's important that we have those answers, not just in a letter to Congressman Sherman, but in actual response to the questions that council members may also want to ask of him. So if, the motion is really to invite him to our next meeting, scheduled for the 23rd, with a willingness to continue it for a short while if another date is more convenient.
Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. On a related, but not a directly related item, just wanted to call attention to one of the several motions and amendments that were made at the meeting at the Airtel when the council met out there in November. One of the items that was requested by me specifically and adopted by the council is a safety record report of Van Nuys Airport. And the reason I think it's unfortunately timely is because of the tragic incident that took place yesterday in Northern Silmar at the Caskits Golf Course. One of those airplanes was on its way back to Van Nuys Airport, so that was a harsh reminder that as you look at Van Nuys Airport, as you look at not just noise, but the activity there in all of the airports, whether they're in the Los Angeles system or in the area, safeties of utmost significance. Thank you.
Anyone else want to be heard on item 41? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you very much. We have, Mr. Ridley Thomas has asked if we take 41 next, 42, rather. We have a card, and that's why it was called special. We have a, David Burwell, that wants to be heard.
Hello, my name is David Burwell. I'm a member of the Los Angeles City Fire Department, and over the years, I've met several of the council persons here when we've gone out on calls. I've been a member of, on February 10th, it'll give me 20 years of service, serving the citizens of L.A. And like I said, I've seen several of you out there on the calls, and I want to let you know, as a firefighter, as an apparatus operator, I drive the hook and ladder, I drive the truck. I appreciate you, and I appreciate your help very much. The reason why I'm here talking to you today, it's about Fire Station 94. Fire Station 94, it has, it's been going through some changes. The apparatus where we park our trucks on the floor is sinking. And the remedy for the problem is, we basically need a new fire station. I know they're talking about replacing it, but the station needs, we need a new station, simply because when 94s was conceived, it was conceived in the 50s, and Los Angeles gave birth to it in the 60s. When it was conceived in the 50s, the apparatus that we were driving at that time weighed a lot less. They weighed about maybe 48,000 pounds. Today, in the year 2000, they weigh 60,000 pounds. So you're talking about a tremendous more amount of weight that the apparatus weighed. And the reason they weigh this much is because we are required to carry more and more equipment. We carry the jaws of life, and we've added more equipment that is heavier and heavier, so as a result, the station has outfulfilled its usefulness. Now, I also operate a business within the Los Angeles area. I also own a dry cleaning business, and I had it, it burned up in the riots in '92, so I can, I fought fires, and I've also suffered loss from fires. And I know the importance of having a Class A fire station, having a Class A fire department. When I do the maintenance at the Fire Station 94, one of the problems that I have is, the station is too small. A lot of times, I have to extend my aerial ladder across the sidewalk where people have to walk underneath it, and sometimes the school kids may have to walk around in the street. But this maintenance is required, so we need a new station. We do not need the repairs, and I mean, I pay my tax dollars, I look at, like I'm writing out my business checks, what I'm going to be paying the city of Los Angeles, my business taxes, which are due. I paid my hazardous materials, which are due. And I would like the city to really look at not wasting the dollars in repairs, but in fixing a brand-new station. And thank you for your time, and thank you for your support.
Okay. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, firefighter Burwell has made it quite clear as to what some of the challenges are. Item number 42 further explains the challenges. We have two chiefs here who can refine it, but the action is rather straightforward. It calls for either repair or replacement, and that report will come back to us pursuant to the Fire Department and the Department of Public Works analyzing the matter, and that will be within approximately 45 days. Let me just simply amend this item by saying, in light of the expenses that have already been incurred, stipulated in the motion here, it calls for $75,000. That should be amended pursuant to the Fire Department's request to $125,000. I would so move, and with that, Mr. President, that concludes my remarks, and we can dispose of this matter rather immediately.
Did you want to say something?
No, sure.
All right, Mr. Fear.
Fire Department knows when it's ahead, just to let it go. It's okay. I want to rise in support of Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion. Mark, I just want to offer to amend the fifth instruction, which has reports coming to the full council on cost and so forth. Listen to public safety and budget, and then the council, that'd be great. And otherwise, Mr. Ridley Thomas really got on this in a timely way. It's an important issue, it's the quality of our firefighting crew, and to their ability to deliver a timely response to our residents. Good motion, we should all support it.
Prepare the roll on...
As amended.
Prepare the roll as amended. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Now, we're going to go back to, start, you want to thank Nate Burke? Okay, the next item.
Item number 14 is being held on the desk.
Okay, we have a couple people want to be heard on this. Kathy Knight of Santa Monica, and Patricia McPherson, or something like that.
Yes.
Welcome to Los Angeles.
I know, I was born and raised in Los Angeles, so I do have an interest in Los Angeles. And I know you always raise that I live in Santa Monica right now. But I'm representing Spear of the Sage Council, and we're interested in protecting biodiversity and native lands all over Southern California. We would like to call your attention that we... We would like to call your attention that we recommend you don't proceed any further on anything on Playa Vista, until you do a subsequent environmental impact report. And the reason you need that is there's new and change circumstances. Contrary to what you were told by Latham and Watkins, the attorney for Playa Vista on December eighth, the toxic gas issue was not raised in the nineteen ninety-three EIR that you approved. Otherwise, you would have had mitigation measures being approved in nineteen ninety-three. The official response in that EIR was that there's no shallow zones of methane gas in this land, and now we know we have eighty-four percent methane coming out of the ground. There's huge liabilities here without public disclosure under CEQA. You have liabilities to the bond buyers, to potential residents on the land, adjacent property owners, and to at-risk youth that are being brought in to work on this land. There's hydrogen sulfide, there's other toxic gases. Like Belmont, these studies are being kept in-house and not revealed in public hearings. There's also, like in Belmont, the gas, when you started constructing, migrated into the adjacent areas. At Belmont, children are breathing H2S in their bedrooms now. There's, there's, we measured lethal amounts of H2S coming out of the, right next to the window of a home of a newborn baby there. The liability of the toxic gas migrating into the Belmont area has not even been addressed, as to my knowledge at this point. At Belmont, no public hearings were held. When the hearings were held, the truth came out. At Belmont, no mitigation system was ever designed when it was approved, because they were denying there was a toxic gas problem. We also want to thank Nate Holden. At the December eighth hearing of the Housing and Community Redevelopment Committee, Nate Holden asked the best question there. He asked the heads of four departments, Fire Department, Planning Department, Public Works, and Building and Safety. He asked those heads, do you have any firsthand knowledge it's safe to build at Playa Vista? Or are you completely, one-hundred percent relying on a one, on this one report from Texas, a third-party review? All four heads stated they have no firsthand knowledge that it is safe to build at Playa Vista. They were all relying one-hundred percent on one report from Texas. That's why you need to have public hearings on this issue, subsequent EIR done, and the ability for the public to know what are the public health and safety risks here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Patricia McPherson. I hope I got the last name right.
Yes, it's McPherson, thank you.
Go right ahead, ma'am.
Just to add on to what Kathy said last week in the LA Weekly, Vic Panera, who's engineering Building and Safety, states that methane mitigation works. It has kept buildings with similar soil gas problems safe throughout the LA basin. The downtown Central Library complex is a good example, according to Panera. The soon-to-be-built Fountain Park Apartments complex at Playa Vista could well become another. Well, I'd like to reiterate what Kathy just said, which we have on record, that no one in this city has the expertise to deal with the mitigation problems in this city. Not only that, but the LA City Library is nothing at all like what is happening out at the Playa Vista site. At the Playa Vista site, we have a leaking reservoir gas from the Southern California Gas Reservoir, at seventeen, to an illegal twenty-four hundred pounds per square inch. Council members, you are the lead agency here. You are responsible for enforcing the law of the land, including the Public Resource Code. You are not enforcing the Public Resource Code. Code three-two-one-nine, there is an absolute obligation to investigate for the risk of explosion and fire, especially where the well casings, oil well casings, are not of sufficient strength to withstand the high pressures, gas conditions such as exist for all of the wells throughout the Playa Vista area. Code three-three-one-seven, violation, namely, there is a threat of inundation from the sea and which subsidence, subsidence which has not been looked at at all for this site, subsidence which Building and Safety does not account for any more than do they account for any of the toxic problems here, for which subsidence is endangering the life, health, and safety of persons, or which is damaging or is threatening to cause damage to, any surface or underground improvements located on such lands, overlying, or immediately adjacent to such pool or pools. You shall use every effort and endeavor effectually to prevent blowouts, explosions, and fires. This language has been on the books since nineteen thirty-nine, and has also been addressed by an opinion by the Attorney General requiring the same. This has flagrantly not been addressed here. No well data has ever been analyzed from an engineering standpoint. No, I'd like just another minute here to finish, I'm almost finished.
I'm gonna give you one more minute.
No mitigation has been proposed that includes all of the unique and various elements of systems that must take place at, at Biona. Like the aborted Belmont, no system to deal with all the risk hazards in concert has ever been designed. And like Belmont, it will be aborted because of the liabilities and difficulties and financial costs of trying to come up with a mitigation system that it might at best work with a twenty-four-hour expertise that even the Southern California Gas Company has not been able to accomplish. I'm here to tell you in good faith today that we have the absolute documentation of an absolute fraud by the Southern California Gas Company in lack of disclosure to, to this city. And Playa Capital, as landowner for this property-
Okay, thank you, Kath. Patricia, thank you very much. You've heard your, your speech many times. That the public hearing is closed.
Could you tell me-
Please.
Tell me, did I say?
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Galanter, did you want to say something? Mr. Holden wants to say something.
Is the attorney Latham and Watkins here? I heard them mention the, the name of the firm. Are they here? Anybody representing Latham and Watkins? Hold my time, Mr. President, while you walk up, please. Mr. President, would you kindly hold my time while Latham and Watkins? You from Latham and Watkins?
Yes, sir, Mr. Holden, my name is Patty Sinclair. I'm a partner of Latham and Watkins. We're counsel to Playa Capital Company.
You believe this is a good project?
Yes, sir, I do. They're my client.
Are they paying you to say that?
I am registered lobby with the city of, registered lobbyist with the city of Los Angeles.
Well, you associated anyway with the Greek Theater also?
No, I am not, sir. I was not involved in that project.
Oh, this is a good one, and that's a bad one. Oh, I see. Now, I gotta tell you that maybe there's some people now are gonna take the idea, they're gonna do it, circulate an initiative to turn this whole thing around, just like you guys did. You know what I mean? You can't have it both ways if you believe in the process, is that right?
Councilmember Holden, I can't address the Greek Theater matter. I was not counsel on that matter.
That's right. But you're all just beat up on my president, and it just isn't right. I mean, I, I take issue with that. I really do. Mr. President, I, don't, don't, if you, you have to get somebody that's in the chair, because you can't interrupt me on this one. My time is not up. But I'm really, I just never forgot that. I don't forget things like that. You know, you come in here and you ask for that pipeline, is that right, Mr. Hernandez? And they work, we work to help you with the pipeline, I'm just not gonna give you access anymore, because you have a double standard, and I don't like that.
Okay, we have item fourteen before us. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Item number six is this report from the Department of Water and Power. Give us your name, please.
My name is Tom Erb. I'm the Director of Water Resources with the Department of Water and Power. I have a brief presentation to illustrate our water supply condition, so the good news this year is that our water supplies are going to be adequate for the coming year. Our most important indicator of the city's water supply is our eastern Sierra supply. This chart that you see on the mammoth past snow conditions show that in the last few weeks, we've had a dramatic turnaround in our water supply. And there are still several weeks left in, in the normal year to get snowfall, so we hope to improve that condition. Next slide. This shows that we have only gotten about twenty percent of normal rainfall for this time of year. But what's more important is, on the next slide, which it shows that eighty-five percent of the city's water supplies come from imported sources. And so, what's more important is snowfall in Northern California, and water supply available on the Colorado River and eastern Sierras. So, for the coming year, we're projecting that a little over half of our water supplies are gonna come from our own sources on the Los Angeles Aqueducts, about one-fourth from local groundwater supplies, and will make up the difference with purchased water from the Metropolitan Water District. And if we were to have a period of extended, of dry years, we've anticipated that we could make up that supply with supplemental supply from the Metropolitan Water District. This slide just illustrates that in Los Angeles, about two-thirds of the water supply is used by single-family and multifamily residences, with the remainder in commercial and industrial In this slide, it's illustrating what our, the city's water demands have been, and you can see in the bar charts that in the late eighties and early nineties, there was a major drought, and the city's water demands went down significantly as our residents started exercising water conservation. And we've illustrated what that amount of water conservation is, and it, to this day, it remains rather significant. And the residents of the city are to be commended for continuing their water conservation efforts since the drought. We have a number of programs that are continued to be in place since the drought, including our ultra-low flush toilet program, which we've installed almost nine-hundred thousand toilets to this day. We have other programs, the technical assistance program, which provides financial assistance to commercial and industrial customers. We have, the city council approved a retrofit on resale ordinance, where any single-family homes that sold must install ultra-low flush toilets. We have other programs that are provided to city residents to help them continue the water conservation efforts. Some other programs we have are washing machine rebate programs, pipeline replacement programs, and public education programs. So, in summary, I just want to reiterate that for the coming year, we will have adequate water supplies. We got off to a slow start, but the snowpack has improved dramatically, and we anticipate that for the next ten years, there will be adequate supplemental water supplies to make up any deficiencies in the city's own water demands, or, excuse me, in the city's own water supply conditions. So, that's my report.
The, the low rainfall that we've had in the city, does that hurt our underwater, underground supply?
Uh-huh. If it were to continue for a long period of time, it could have an impact, because as you know, the rainfall could percolate into the groundwater supply. So, at this time, we still have significant amounts of water that are stored in our main water supply in the San Fernando Valley. So, for many years, we could draw on that supplemental supply that we've stored in wetter times.
What about the snow? You say that we had some recent snow in the ma-
In the last month, we've had a dramatic turnaround in the eastern Sierras. So, the snowpack is, is at much closer to normal conditions for this time of year.
Okay. Are there any questions? We want to thank you for this report. It's very encouraging. I'm sure that when the motion was brought in, Ms. Galanter, we didn't have the snowpack in the-
I'm feeling quite some-
Yeah, so, thank you. Ms. Skakowsky?
Mr. President, I would just like to call to your attention, perhaps, I don't know if we have on the, on the slide up. A couple of the pages in this presentation, I think, are to be a great complement to our, our public, and that is the actual water demand and the population. And from the years in the late eighties, early nineties, when we started serious conservation measures, we have seen the water demand actually be lower in the late nineties than it was in the late eighties, both with increased conservation and with increased population. So, it's basically saying that those water systems and water conservation systems that we imposed are working, and that the public is abiding by them to a great degree, and helping at this, in the situation at the same time. And I just wanted to call that out, because I thought it was a, an appropriate issue in terms of just looking at total amounts. We're also reducing the demand, even with a growing population. And I think that's a compliment to our city population, to Water and Power, in terms of getting those messages out there, and we just need to stay that course.
Thank you very much. We'll receive and file the report. Okay, the next item?
Item number twenty-four, called special.
Yeah, Mr. Shapiro.
Mr. President, council members, item number twenty-four regards the continuation of a contract with the big wheels in the legal field, Melvene and Myers, and Quaitman and Zidell. But of course, this is, this is done, being done by the Board of Airport Commissioners. So, you don't figure it's directly, direct knowledge to you, but what's gonna be understood is, on this backup material, which provides all the material that you and we, the public, get, it states that your, the legal services of the law firms are being retained for numerous matters associated with financing of current and futures. Wait a minute, numerous matters. I think the public and the city council is entitled to more information. If you had a contract with them for five years, and you're renewing it for two years, you gotta know what it's all about. How, what was the original contract? Why isn't that put down there? Why is anybody afraid to get any information from Melvene and Myers and the other firm? Here it is. I don't believe it deserves to be put out and given an extension without any bids, without any information, and just because the city council accepts it that way. I don't accept it that way. Before you renew any contract to my satisfaction, I'd like to know what contracts you're renewing, and what you're doing about it, and what they're doing.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion on this? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number twenty-eight, called special by Councilmember Chick.
We, we do have a card. We have Leonard Shapiro.
Mr. President, item twenty-eight concerns Laura Chick's motion on the Government Efficiency Committee. And she's talking about the problem that, that surfaced about a year ago, when it was discovered that the city paid, lost approximately eight-hundred thousand dollars because they didn't pay their telephone bills on time. Well, this is being brought out, new process is being talked about, where you can find out how you can make sure that everybody can pay their bills on time. And of course, what they're talking about here in detail is that you got a contract on Prima, you got these, there's these words there, that you are purchasing, receiving, inventory management, and accounts payable. Well, it's gotta be found out why you don't pay your bills on time. Why certain vendors know that if they deal with the city, it's gonna take them six months to twelve months to do it. Now, you're requesting that the controller, in five different ways, that the controller set up a procedure, so you be sure that everything is gonna be paid on time, and everything is gonna, and you're gonna institute new processes, which you're doing with computers. I don't think you even need computers, although you should use them as much as you can, but you need somebody in management to worry about the fact that everybody knows the city of LA doesn't pay their bills on time, and if you have to do business with the city of LA, you got to put enough extra money into the bill, so that they'll be sure they get enough, because you won't get the money in time.
We're gonna get old Melvene and Myers to check that out for us, Mr. Holden.
Why not? Because, but the point, but the point still is, you want to be sure you don't lose another eight-hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mrs. Chick.
Well, yes, thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Shaf, thank you very much. I, Mr. Shapiro, I am interested, and many of us are, and I'm sure Mr. Farro is too. I think Mr. Shapiro made the case very well, and I ask my colleagues to support this, so we can move forward in improving the expediency with which we pay appropriate bills that come in, and particularly, as we reach out to small business, minority-owned and women-owned businesses, it's essential that, as we want them to participate more in city contracts and bidding on city contracts, we have to make sure we're not putting them and others out of business by asking them to wait inappropriate lengths of time for their payments, and in addition, to make sure that the city takes advantage of any and every discount that's available by paying our bills promptly as well. Thank you.
Any other, if not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item twenty-nine, called special by Councilmember Wax.
Item twenty-nine.
Yes, I don't know if there's anyone here from the department or not, if, no, no. This is a recommendation from Mr. Sbornich's committee to receive. Let's let Ms. Banerjee make her report, and then I'd like to speak after that, Mr. President.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good morning, council members. My name's Frances Banerjee, General Manager of the Department of Transportation, and I'm joined by Jim Sherman, the Parking Administrator, Robert Andalon in the Office of Parking Management. What we want to report to you today is the experience that the city's had on the transition in parking meters from mechanical meters to electronic ones. I'll be brief in my comments and give you an overview of the- I'll be brief in my comments and give you an overview of the highlights. In nineteen ninety-six, the department, through a competitive request for proposal, awarded a seven-million-dollar contract to Duncan Industries to convert forty-two-thousand-five-hundred parking meters from mechanical to electronic devices. The electronic meters were selected by the city in this, uh, process for the following benefits. They, uh, they have less problems with junk coins, they provide a basis for conversion to smart cards in the future, should the council wish to consider that, and they provide a much improved auditing capability for maintenance and revenue. During the transition period of installing these meters, problems were encountered. Uh, some of the problems, I'll give you just the highlights of examples, uh, some of the coins didn't register on time, some meters showed a failed message after the money was deposited, and battery connections were susceptible to loosening by excessive jarring. In order to focus on the problems with the meters and provide a basis for a remedial program, the city staff, LADOT staff, conducted a thorough survey of over two-thousand-eight-hundred meters and used these results to, uh, design a remedial program along with the, the vendor, Duncan, to, uh, to fix the meters and to, um, develop a much more streamlined program. Where are we today? All forty-two thousand meters have been retrofitted by Duncan Industry at their cost of approximately one million dollars. We have evaluated the performance of these meters, and they have been, uh, problems have been resolved. Approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in parking citations have been refunded or dismissed by the department during this period. The meter warranty was extended through the end of the year two thousand, and a contractual agreement was entered into that guarantees the performance of the meters in two important areas. Uh, the meters will achieve a ninety-nine percent accuracy threshold for coin recognition and a ninety-eight, uh, percent threshold for, uh, in, for instance, of intermittent failure. Those are two very important features. Uh, they wa- did not exist in the warranty that came with the meter when they were first purchased, um, and they really provide, uh, a strong threshold for guaranteed performance of the meter. Our testing today, as of this date, they are meeting that threshold satisfactorily at this time. We will review the meters again, um, extensively in the fall of the year two thousand to ensure that, uh, the meters perform as, as they are right now and as we expect them to. The contract provides, if there are any problems identified at that time, the warranty will again be extended, and all problems with the meters are repaired at no cost to the city of Los Angeles. The second part of this major effort was to make sure that the public was dealt with fairly at this time, during this transition, and what we did was evaluate the over two-point-eight million dollar citations that were, uh, issued during this period of time on expired meters. We found, and I'll just highlight the key findings, that, uh, meter citation issuance in this category decreased fourteen percent during the transition period. That's an important thing for the council members to know, because some of our traffic officers were, uh, misrepresented as unfairly writing tickets, and the evidence really supports the traffic officers, that during this period of time, they didn't write, um, as many tickets, a real dramatic increase in the, um, expired meter category. The traffic officers adhered to their established policy of not writing tickets at problem meters, and that has borne true. Uh, during this period of time, we had a four-hundred percent increase in contested tickets. We also had a sixteen-fold increase in the number of tickets that were dismissed on the expired meters. The value of all of that refund program through this period, as I mentioned earlier, is seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I'd like to summarize and, and say that this transition has resulted in the following. The contractor, Duncan Industries, has spent approximately a million dollars to deliver to the city a fully reliable meter and has entered into a contractual agreement to extend the warranties and to guarantee its performance. The department has spent approximately ninety thousand dollars in staff costs to conduct a thorough evaluation of the meter performance. Duncan Industry has pledged to compensate the city for staff costs. We also revised our process, and I think this is an important lesson learned for the department, to make sure that all such purchases are thoroughly field-tested prior to full-scale deployment in the future. The department has refunded seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the public and dismissed citations for expired parking meters, and based on a thorough review of all information available, and that's from a, uh, electrical system statistical point of view, we believe this matter requires no further action by the city council.
Mr. Wax?
Yeah, so first, let me thank, uh, I particularly want to thank Ms. Bannery and her staff for the thoroughness with which they have responded to an issue that is really of basic importance to a lot of people in the city. I also want to thank, and, and probably more than any other, uh, single source, who want to thank, um, Joel Grover and Channel Two for their bringing this to the public's attention, much like they did, uh, the restaurant conditions and other issues. Uh, those are the best uses of journalism, when you can highlight something that is wrong and you can get action in terms of correcting it. To reiterate, uh, briefly, um, some of the, uh, reforms that have taken place, first and foremost, uh, the meters have been retrofitted and, uh, will be warranted to work properly in the future. The second, of seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars of refunds have been made to people who contested, uh, their tickets and were, in fact, proven to have had tickets written on broken meters. Uh, third, uh, we've got a better policy understanding with the labor and management in terms of understanding their roles, uh, and inability to work cooperatively on this in the future. If there's one thing that I, uh, two issues that I think really have not yet been resolved, uh, and apparently won't at this time because of the cost and the law of diminishing returns, I think that there are a number of people who got improper tickets who did not contest them. Many people don't contest it for a variety of reasons. It's too difficult, uh, they don't know that they can, and I think that we could have gone farther in trying to search them out and give them back, uh, their money. As a side effect, however, even on that, let me caveat, uh, it's my understanding the department is now developing a website and other things where it'll be a lot easier for people to know about how to contest a ticket and, in fact, contest it without having to go someplace and, and, uh, write and things of that nature. So, and the other thing that I think remains undone is, I think that Duncan, which has been very responsible for bearing the cost of retrofitting the meters and all, really should pay the city the seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars that we've had to pay out, uh, to, to, to the public, uh, for improperly written tickets. Uh, and I've asked, and we asked in committee for the city attorney to look into the possibility of holding them liable for that, and I'm going to still ask them to pursue that subsequent to, to today's action. But to sum it up, we've gotten, um, ninety percent of, of what we could have gotten. Uh, the public, I think, will have a reassurance and will have a better system. And I'm going to, to take care of the small portion that did not receive it, I'm working on a proposal perhaps for next Christmas, around the, the day or two before Christmas, to give everyone free parking in the city. Maybe that's a way to make it up without the great cost of trying to go through ticket by ticket of those who didn't, uh, take the time to, to, um, challenge them. But again, I think that this is where bringing something to people's attention has resulted in some very, very positive action on behalf of the people of this city, and I thank everybody involved for making it possible, including Mr. Savornic, who chaired the committee and so patiently went through this.
Mr. Holden?
Your free parking request is gonna be dead on arrival. And the reason why, Mr. Wax, because we, the general fund, I mean, the budget is established based on you, what you expect the revenue is from the parking meters. And, you know, unless you're gonna find another place to get that money, then, uh, I, I just can't, I'm not gonna commit to vote for it. I understand what your intentions are. You're a good guy. Uh, but, uh, to the department, question, for each citation that's written, what percentage of the money that comes to the city goes to the court, goes to Lockheed? Could you answer that very quickly on my time?
Yes, uh, approximately two dollars and fifty-four cents goes to the court, and-
How much?
Two fifty, excuse me, two fifty-four is for the citation processing, for, to Lockheed-
Yeah.
And five dollars goes to the court.
Five dollars, so that's seven dollars plus.
Correct.
How much will the city get? How much is a ticket?
It's a thirty-dollar ticket.
Thirty-dollar ticket. Now, what we did, take notice of this, we paid the entire thirty dollars back. Did we get the five dollars from the court? Did Lockheed, uh, knowing what the problem was, give us a two-dollar-plus for what they charged us for? They did not. So we took good money and paid for bad. And I think that's, Mr. Wax, eh, the eagerness on the part of, of the department to accommodate your request, we are paying more money than we should have paid. We should have demanded that Lockheed give us so much per citation and refund, or credit. Would we do that?
No, we did not do that.
Well, let's do it. I'll make a motion that we do that, because they're part of it also. And the courts? We can hold up five dollars until the difference is made up, don't you think so? With the report it back, although we didn't get permission from the courts before we gave the money up, we did it because some people around here said, "Let's do it." Now you respond, please, sir.
Pardon me, what was, what was the question, please?
I lost thirty seconds on that one.
Right. I'm sorry.
Okay, the fact of the matter is that the courts, we advanced, we gave them five dollars plus per citation. We paid back the total amount from, from our general fund of the, the parking citation fund.
That's correct.
But we didn't get the court to kick in, nor did we get Lockheed, who is, is charged, charge us per citation to kick in. What, what are we gonna do about that?
Well, I think it's a matter of, it's a contractual item with, with Lockheed at this point. You know, there's nothing in the contract that would allow us to do that, to go back and, um-
I understand. Okay, therefore, in good faith with my time, we should request of Lockheed, the number of citations that we gave back, that we had to refund, we should ask them for the money back.
They also did the whole review.
For the refund.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. We saw, also, the city attorney should look into the courts, they have the courts give us credit for the mon- that we paid them per citation that we returned, and that should be the motion, Mr. President.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez seconds? Mr. Hernandez?
I'm not sure what's seconding him, Mr. President. I, I, I thought you were gonna call me to speak, uh, but I think Mr. Holden had a good idea. Maybe we should require to put quarters in our, our speaking time so that you can, we can know when we're violation of the amount of time that we're speaking.
Also, also at the, at the, uh, at the front desk there, where, Mr. Shapiro, to put twenty-five-
But I wanted to ask the question because Mr. Holden did have a good idea. What happens when we issue a ticket falsely in regards to our, or a ticket is issued and then Lockheed collects or doesn't collect? I mean, is the contract set up that they make revenue when they collect only?
Yeah, no, no, no.
I, I'm just trying to ask, because here you had a situation where, for whatever reason, we determined that many tickets should not have been issued. And, and, and the bottom line is, the question's being asked, did they collect money on that as if they had been issued?
No.
They did not.
They, they collect money on, on citations that are processed.
That are processed. So these citations that we waived were not processed?
Well, some of them were, yes.
So of the ones that were processed, and then we decided to reimburse the money, they still earned their revenue.
That's correct.
And we basically, so we ended up paying more than the cost of the ticket back, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, how, how can we address that on our contract, if not now, in future negotiations?
We can certainly address that the next time we, uh, we renew the contract with, or go back out to bid for, uh, for the next, um, go-around for the, for system processing.
Well, and, and again, uh, Mr. Wax is dying to speak on my time, you're welcome to. I don't want you to die.
Very briefly, one of the things we asked the city attorney to do was to look into going after Duncan, which is the manufacturer, for the full thirty dollars, including the part that would have gone to the court and to, um, for the full thirty dollars for each of the tickets that we had to refund based upon faulty meters. And we've asked the city attorney to see if under the warranty we had, whether we can go after Duncan for full reimbursement to the city for that.
Okay. So, so then, just, uh, whatever remaining time, if I have any, what we're trying to do is, we're not faulting the report that's before us right now, what we're doing is giving additional instructions to try and recoup some of the revenue, uh, that basically they earned, uh, based on the faulty meter, and we're saying that that should be recouped some way or another, trying to do that. Okay.
Mr. Holden, did you want to be, be heard again?
Yes. Uh, I, I don't think Mr. Hernandez's question was correctly responded to, 'cause if you, if, if a citation is written on a car that's abandoned, uh, Lockheed, for every citation that's written, you have to pay Lockheed, whether it's collectible or not, and that goes into an uncollectible category, which you give them an additional contract to collect the uncollectible. Is that still the case?
Yes, it is.
That's right. So what you're saying then is that, you're saying you paid the two dollars plus for each one that's processed. What's the definition of processed this then, when the ticket is written, no matter what circumstances?
That's correct.
You pay them, whether we, it's bad money, it's a bad ticket or not? 'Cause I've seen two citations on an abandoned automobile, I don't know if they're still doing that, in order to get a quota. Well, they don't do that anymore, I don't think. I won't, I won't say that, but they were doing that, you know, I've seen as many as five, when you were demanding quotas. So the fact of the matter is that, just to show good faith, I think it'd be good for Lockheed, if you call them up and say, these most, hey, the council is aware they would pay all this money back, even what we paid you, could you give us two dollars per that we return?
Councilman, I think we can, we can make that request. It is in the contract that they are paid for the processing. So we could make the request of them, and, and that's a fair request.
It's a fair request.
And then, and then we can take the issue up at any amendments to the contract in, also, as the whole processing contract comes along, and we will pick it up both ways. We'll, we'll try it-
If you'll do that, fine, but I tried to tell you before the contract was written, voted on, that this is something that you should address, that is, bad tickets that are written, Lockheed still gets their money for processing tickets that can't be processed. You understand? So, and then we have to end up compensating them for the good tickets that are processed, whatever good tickets are. Anyway, you make the request. Thank you.
We'll make the request.
Just want to be heard. If not, prepare the roll.
As amended. There is a Holden and Wax motion to request a contractor, Lockheed, to pay back their portion of refunded costs and ask the courts to credit city accounts.
Yeah, there's, uh, that's, there's no objection to that, so prepare the roll as amended. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number thirty-seven called special by Councilmember Chick.
Mrs. Chick, you call thirty-seven special?
I, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to draw our attention to this motion because it's something that I personally am very enthusiastic about, and since I introduced it, I've had quite a few phone calls, um, from other people who were thinking about the same thing, um, or who were very excited about the following concept. This motion asks for a feasibility study, because I don't believe that we should go forward with things without taking a look at whether it, they're realistic or not, but to create a museum of the city of Los Angeles. Uh, we have so many, uh, things in our past in terms of photographs in our library archives and all kinds of relics and things that have been, for instance, dug up, uh, in the MTA's work, uh, dating back to our beginnings, uh, with the Chumash Indians, and, uh, no place really where they are displayed. And in addition, to have a location where we can bring together our rich cultural diversity and the history and the role that all of our different religious and ethnic groups have played, uh, from the beginning of the city of Los Angeles. Uh, in addition, um, besides looking at a home for such a museum and possible funding, we're very much thinking that there can be, uh, satellite locations, perhaps, uh, in some of our constituent service centers, and/or traveling exhibits that can go to constituent service centers or to, uh, the Van Nuys City Hall location, or even be taken out to some of our schools. So, uh, I think the possibilities are endless, and, uh, also, uh, very many ways to avoid touching, um, taxpayer dollars. Uh, the intent here is not to take any money from the general fund, but rather the talent, the energy, and the creativity from the city and the richness of our past, and create something that is of benefit to all the people of the city and to our visitors and tourists. Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez?
You know, I, I rise to support, uh, Ms. Chick on this motion and to also discuss a little bit of the important- bit of the importance of that history and how it is that we as a city grew, especially when we're having discussions about succession and things like this. Lately, members, I've had the pleasure of sharing with people a concept that we're opening the Broadway Bridge, and the Broadway Bridge was built in the 1920s, but it hooks up the communities of Lincoln Heights and Chinatown. And that bridge, when it was originally built, had these observation decks overseeing the river. And it's at the foot, front of Elysian Park. And we're going to be, basically, the city has spent $20 million in retrofitting and preserving its history of a bridge and its importance to our city. See, very few people know that the first suburb of Los Angeles and planned community was Lincoln Heights, and that's where the zoo was. And I tell people, if you go down the other side of the bridge, what you have is Downey Recreation Park, and if you read the LA Times, they just had a story of Downey being the governor who fought succession and did not want to allow for Southern or Northern California to happen. But I talk about Downey Park because on the corner of the park is a plaque, is a plaque. And it's a plaque that basically acknowledges that that was the birthplace of the City of Los Angeles, that that's where the first settlers came to, and that was the Dominguez Ranch. Now, I kind of share it with people because I had the experience of looking at this plaque and realizing that when everybody talks about Calle El Veda, that Calle El Veda happened in the 20s, although the Avila Home was placed there as the first alcald of the city way before 1848. But nobody really recognizes our history as a city, which is a tremendous history of people trying to better their lives on an ongoing basis from a multitude of areas. So I just kind of wanted to reinforce what Ms. Chick is saying about Los Angeles, and I think many of us as public policy members have to be continually reminded of that history of our great city.
We have 37. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number 39, called special by Councilmember Walters.
Mrs. Walters, you call 39 special?
Yes, Mr. President, I call it special for the purpose of amending it, and I believe the amending motion is on everybody's desk. And what the amending motion does is basically directs the Department of Disabilities to design a public education program with respect to the use of disabled person placards. The main motion is calling for perhaps some higher fines, traffic fines, but I think program of education, a concomitant program of education should be considered at the same time.
Maybe UCLA could design it.
I think they would be very good.
For disabilities, yeah. They're experts on it. Ms. Goldberg?
Yes, I'm sorry, I did not get a copy of the report. What are we increasing the fines from two?
We're not increasing yet. It's asking for a study for increasing...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because other cities levy much higher fines than we do.
I see.
But I don't want it just to be a levying of fines, that we conduct a program of education.
Public education, good. I support 39A, that, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, around, right, around the issue of what is the appropriate use of disabled person placard.
So then it will come back with a recommendation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Galanter?
And we're asking for it, I'm asking for it in 30 days.
Ms. Galanter?
One of the complaints that I get frequently in my office has to do with people who legitimately have a placard, but since it's not tied to any one particular vehicle, they then lend it to somebody, or maybe somebody in the family or somebody else, and they just take, you know, mom's placard. And so it's, it's actually being used inappropriately, but I don't think we have a really good mechanism for how to deal with that. And I'd like to suggest that as part of the report back, that we also ask DOT if they have any, can come up with some suggestions for how to make sure that those who legitimately have the placard are the only ones who are actually using it.
I think that's inherent in the motion. One of the sections of the motion says that disabled placard users of their rights and responsibilities.
No, I didn't mean to criticize your motion, it's just that my experience with DOT...
No, I know, but I'm saying that that's included in the motion.
Okay, but I encourage you to make it explicit because my experience with DOT has been, and sometimes other departments, that they, they don't always answer the question you think you've asked them unless you're very clear about what the question is.
All right, I would ask that your suggestion be explicitly stated in the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no objections to 39A, so, as amended. 39A, to amend 39, so prepare the roll on 39 as amended. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item 45 is a closed session item, so now's the time for public comment on non-agenda items.
Well, we have a couple people that want to be heard on 45, so it's a closed session item, but David Bush and Daniel De Pasqual.
This is our second time before the council on the matter of our arrest in Pershing Square Park for feeding homeless people. My name's David Bush, I'm a member of Food Not Bombs in LA, and this is, this is before you guys in closed session. We're being represented by the American Civil Liberties Union on this, and it's a privilege to be represented by them. They have a proposal before you, and we're here to urge you to accept that proposed agreement so that we don't have to go to court and fight this out. It's very unfortunate that we were arrested. And I, I'd just like to say that, that it is a privilege to speak before the city council and to be a chance just to, I hope that the council would consider the importance of what we were out there talking about, which is the increasing poverty here in LA. We hear a lot of council time here today spent on divvying up the city bureaucracy or how we're conserving water, or who's getting the fat city contracts to represent us legally. It's, it's sorry that such talent that's here on the council and such human concern is spent with so much time dealing with these issues when the matter of fact is that the United Way has now declared LA to be the poverty capital of the nation, something which you all know. And 20% of us in LA now live in poverty. I'm a homeless person, and I don't collect government checks, I don't get city aid, I'm self-sufficient as a homeless person. I write for the homeless newspaper, that's how I survive, and sleep on the street. But even homeless people in the city can give back, and that's what we were trying to do in Pershing Square, by feeding other homeless people with food that's thrown away in this city, which, as you all know, is shameful. And of course, just want to remind you as the city council that two years ago, you guys did pass unanimously a resolution recognizing so many of these things, as you guys do. The, the fact that there are many laws on the books that are criminalizing homeless people, and this law, which we were arrested under, was one of those laws. And so it asks, I would just want to close by asking you as the city council, you're part of the city count, the city government of this city, I'd ask that, when you consider this agreement in your closed session, that you would agree to adopt it, as I believe the, the will is here to do that. But I'd ask you to also ask the other part of the governance of this city, the mayor of LA, to look at this issue of how people feeding poor and homeless people in the City of Los Angeles can be arrested for that, and whether or not some attention needs to be brought to the fact that we ought to be speaking out more about this, we ought to be protesting more about this, and people who do want to speak out and protest about this shouldn't have to face arrest.
Okay, thank you. You made your point. You want to be heard? Give your name, please.
I'll go quickly because I know everyone wants to get out of here, myself included. My name's Dan De Pasqual. I'm also an organizer with Food Not Bombs, and I was also arrested on December 19th for refusing to move our community meal from a visible location in the park to the back of the park where we couldn't be seen. And the main portion of our community meals is showing an alternative and showing that people do care about other people in Los Angeles and trying to bring to the forefront poverty. And I just wanted to commend the city for voting on the last closed session that came before us, 13 to nothing, to give us temporary relief from this, and I just would encourage the council to really put this, put this whole situation behind us and show Los Angeles can be a leader in free speech in the city and can be a leader in showing other cities that Food Not Bomb members are not criminals and should not be arrested for serving food in prominent locations. And just the last thing I wanted to say is, I hope you really consider the motion today. And I think an important part is that this motion also provides a mediation process for us that, to avoid situations like this in the future.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is closed on 45, and we'll...
How about, how about me?
Well, you didn't have a card, Mr. Shapiro.
I had a card in there.
For what?
For public comment.
But this is not public comment, Mr. Shapiro.
Excuse me?
Item 45 is a closed session item, and we will go in this closed session after we hear from Mr. Shapiro on public comment. Pay attention, Mr. Shapiro.
I guess I should. I stand corrected, Mr. President. This, this meeting was a really informative, instructive meeting for those people, approximately 15,000 to 20,000 that watch this broadcast every day can, can learn. Why C-session? Why is all this talk and feeling and emotion being raised, all these issues being raised about C-session every time it talks up? All anybody has to see is listening to this program, and then you'll see why there's C-session. Here, listen to that debate that LaFko had. Listen to all the emotion generated. Listen to all the feeling that was put in. No facts, just feeling. They, they wanted, they tell you, "You gave us 265,000 with conditions. We don't want your conditions. Either get rid of these conditions, let us know you don't, or we don't need you." And you say, "Go ahead." You told them, "Go ahead." Now they're having a meeting and they're going to go ahead, and they'll go ahead with the C-session movement, they'll go ahead with the studies in the city for the San Fernando Valley and the harbor, and then they'll do some more on Hollywood and on Venice and on Sunland and any other part of the city they want. Because anybody watching these hearings, watching the city council, has got to come away with the feeling, what do we want to do with them? They don't get our message. Our message to them is given in petitions and given to them countless times, "We want to let you know, we don't like your shenanigans. We're sick and tired of the way you govern. We're sick and tired of the way you handle the public." I represent the public to the people who are watching right now. They understand what I'm doing here, they understand I'm doing my best that I can to get you to become responsive, and you don't want to become responsive. There's 87 other cities in this county. Every one of them encourages public comment, they beg for public comment, they beg the people to come there and participate. Instead of you doing that, you go your own way. In 1998, over a year and a half ago, you had 10 meetings posted to the public.
Okay, then, Mr. Shapiro...
You shouldn't have cut me down before I get three minutes, they see that too.
No, you have had your three minutes, Mr. Shapiro.
No, I didn't have my three minutes.
Yeah, well, you did too. Mr. Holden will help you down. Okay. Okay, the public comment period is closed. We're going to go into executive session, so all those not involved in the executive session, please leave the council chamber, and we will clear the desk off.
Request to be excused from council attendance, Councilmember Walters, request to be excused on March 24th for city business, this meets policy.
Unanimous vote.
Councilmember Savornich, request to be excused on February 8th to leave at noon and March 1st for personal business, city business, this meets policy.
Unanimous vote.
Councilmember Galanter, request to arrive late on February 23rd for city business, meets policy.
Unanimous vote.
motions for posting and referral?
There are no objections, unanimous vote. Mr. Shapiro, would you leave the council chamber, please? We have an executive session.
Mr. Shapiro, Mr. Shapiro, while you're leaving, I want you to know that yesterday, the city, the police department arrested three people for a cross burning in Shadow Hills as a result of reward. Specifically, the information came in response to reward.
Now we're back in open session. Mr. Fier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Phyllis Gomer, who was the grandmother of one of my longtime entrusted deputies, Alex Ponder. She was born in LA in 1928, attended UC Berkeley, and was active in Hadassah and a variety of other Jewish charities, and a longtime resident of Westwood Village.
Ms. Galanter?
I have two, Mr. President. First, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Michael Fassman, who passed away Sunday night. He was 90 years old.
Marge?
He was on the, on the board of directors of the Venice Family Clinic, among other things, and was attending the Silver Circle Dinner for their big donors, and at the very end of the dinner, as he was getting ready to leave, he just collapsed. He survived by his wife, Marge, whom many of us know, and a number of children, I'll have to bring in the pertinent details, but I, I think we may all want to be on that. The Fassmans are, I think, known to many of us. So, I mean, it was just an awful end to a really lovely evening, and at least it was quick, but it's going to be, it's a blow to not only his friends and family, but to all of the people who have been involved with the Venice Family Clinic and other charities as well. I'd also like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Westchester resident Terry Tipton. He and his wife Irene have been very active in Westchester community and have been very involved in Neighborhood Watch for a number of years.
Ms. Goldberg?
Yes, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Sid Cassidy, who was the founder of the Academy of Television Arts and Sciences and a very long time and dear friend of mine and my family's. He died Friday at his home after a long illness, and he was 91 years old. In 1946, he began the academy, and in addition to sponsoring the annual Emmy Awards, which recognize outstanding entertainment, the academy has outreach programs and archival programs as well, and has initiated forums for the discussion of television's role in society. Sid was born in Teaneck, New Jersey, in 1908, December 28th. He worked for the Army Signal Corps and as a film editor under then Colonel Frank Capra. And that's where they began a long, a long-time friendship. After the war, Sid Cassidy moved to Hollywood, he worked as an editor for Box Office Magazine, as well as a grip at Paramount Studios. He met and teamed up at Paramount with Klaus Landsberg, known for other things, among other things, as televi, as pioneering live TV news coverage in what later became KTLA, Channel Five. I could go on and on about Sid, and he's survived by his wife Miriam and his daughter Donna, who's been a close friend of mine for many, many, many years. But I would have to say that throughout all of his life, Sid Cassidy always fought for the little guy and always fought for those folks, perhaps, in television who weren't making the top executive salaries and the top star talent salaries, and was a man who cared deeply about social issues in this society. Had a great sense of humor, told stories that I think if you had ever had a chance to hear him tell about the industry that would both entertain as well as enlighten you about the nature of that business. And I will miss him, I know his family will miss him, as will many, many, many friends.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, I'd like to announce that Presley Williams Burrows Jr. died February 11th, no, 8th, and he moved to Los Angeles in 1952 where he became involved with computers. His last eight years in the workforce was with the County of Los Angeles, where he was recognized for being a master computer operator. After his retirement, he continued to be actively involved in improving the lives and families and neighborhoods in our community. Leaves his wife Ethel of 44 years, two children, Presley Williams Jr., Lynn, Marie, two sisters, and a host of relatives and friends. Certainly is going to be missed. Mr. President, also, also, Mr. President, members, Susan Locker, I'm sure she's known by many here, she was a member of the Westside Democratic Club of the Democratic County Committee, a member, she was also, she was only 48 years old, she was in the insurance business, and she just passed away, and we're going to certainly miss her, very active in Democratic County Committee.
Ms. Sikowski?
Councilmember Ridley Thomas asked me to present on his behalf, and I would like to co-present with him, a tribute in memory of Beatrice H. Rosky. Mrs. Rosky suc... Mrs. Rosky succeeded in her long life as a role of a loving wife, mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother. She had a caring, nurturing quality that made her special to everyone around her. She leaves behind her husband, Edward P. Rosky Sr., her son, Edward P. Rosky Jr., and many grandchildren and great-grandchildren.
All members. All members on that. Mr. Pacheco.
Yeah, Pacheco. Mr. President, members of the council, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Delia Melendris. Miss Melendris is the sister of one of my friends, Mr. Henry Lozano, who passed away on February 3rd. She is survived by her husband, Ernie Melendris, daughters Kimberly and Jackie, and their son, Sean, and their grandson, Blue. She was 56 years old.
Mr. President, I'd like to join on that.
Mr. Wax?
I'm just really saddened to hear of Mike Fassman, I didn't know that. He's, he's really a giant in every way. I've known him, he's, I've known him for probably close to 40 years. He's, whether it's for the arts, the Jewish community, as a philanthropist, as a lawyer, he and Marge are just an amazing couple that give, it's just vibrancy to life, and I'm just stunned to hear that. Going to be missed. And Sid Cassidy, I knew Donna really well in school, and she introduced me to her father, and he, he had some good talks with me when I first ran for office of to what was important and not important, and the people that you should respond to and had to look out after, and I've always valued that, and I'm sorry to see him go. It's, this is an amazing day for me to hear.
Mr. Brinson's got an announcement.
Yes, the Planning, Land Use Management Committee will meet in approximately about seven minutes, seven minutes and 25 minutes to two. Have a tough agenda.
Seven and a half minutes.
Ten seconds.
Call the row.
That's being exact.
The council is adjourned.